We'll start with stormwater ordinance. We'll go through a presentation by staff and then we will open it up for folks who are here who would like to make comments on that. Go ahead.
Great. Well, I'm pleased to be joined tonight with John Joyner, our Director of Public Works, as well as Liz Calhoun, who is our newest Stormwater Resource Analyst staff. So that, I don't know if any of you have met her, so we wanted to make sure that she was here. So she's been working on the post-construction and works with the development community as well on the stormwater reviews and has extensive engineering background, including some time in New Jersey and on the East Coast. So we're pleased to have her with us. So we're here tonight to talk about the post-construction stormwater ordinance. As you mentioned, we came before you on April 17th as well as June 26th. And since that time, we have gone out to the public for further input and bringing before you tonight the topics that came out of the online survey as well as the open houses that we held. We can dive right in if you're ready on topic one?
Yes.
Okay. So issue one that was brought up with reference in the April meeting was maintenance of parking lots. And with that was to direct staff looking at those triggers of reconstruction or maintenance of a parking lot where the impervious surface would not be increased. And allowances and options for incentivizing additional water quality improvements. And so in the June report, if you recall, we had mentioned some zoning allowances now that allow for a 10% reduction in parking. We've brought to you tonight. The response from the survey is that 29 people responded yes, 12 no, and five needed more information. But as you can see, there were quite a few comments received that we've included here and as an attachment to the staff report. And so some of the options, we've come up with five and maybe there's even more than five. In fact, we were talking about another one even yesterday. But what we've come to you with option one could be to modify the parking lot reconstruction with no net increase. And to clarify that, we just need to expand. If the parking lot is expanded, then they would be subject to the whole Chapter 5B. But that could be an exemption that's placed in the ordinance as far as reconstruction if it's not an increase. Another option that we've brought forward would be to require partial compliance. So meeting the water quality standards, that would be the first inch and a quarter of rain. And that would be to be removing the nutrients that build up on those parking lots in between rains. And so that first flush that cleans those parking lots, it would be to address that water quality. Third option, we've been approached by some developers about options for fee and lieu payments. And this was talked about several years ago as well, but wasn't incorporated into the ordinance. But with the option that different conditions are established such that they could meet that criteria and then pay into a regional facility, pay towards that, then the city would need to purchase land and construct a facility that would be a regional facility. And then option four really looks at the reduction of parking. And this is where we were actually having another conversation that Liz and I both have experienced out on the East Coast. And it was really common that the overflow parking or fire lanes were done in more of a permeable pavement because they weren't used often. So like a reinforced turf or permeable pavement that was for that overflow parking. So this would be to, this option four would be to give us some direction on a further reduction of parking requirements. And then option five would be to maintain the current standard. So do we want to vote on each option or how would you like to move forward?
Good question. Well, I think first, let's see if council has any just clarifying questions on the options presented. But before we get into discussing the options, I do want to take public input from folks on the options. But yeah, does anyone have any clarifying questions first?
My question is, what do we know about the characteristics of the online survey respondents? Did they describe themselves in any way or what's the spectrum of people?
Yes. So. Get to that. So people responded that they are a residential property owner. It says 23 rental property owners and nine business owners. But then under other, there were several engineers or developers or all the above and own a home and names and have interest, engineer, consultant, business owner and resident. So there were, you know, compared to the Welch Avenue, this was really small turnout for respondents.
And just to clarify, we're not suggesting that this is statistically significant data. It's more anecdotal. It's helpful. It's better than not having anything, but it's not, we're not going to be making policy based on this data.
Yeah. Yeah. I have a question too. On option two, the partial compliance, where you're talking about meeting quality versus quantity and quality standards, can you give me an idea of what does that mean in terms of like percentage of the requirement? You know, like if they're, if they would normally be required to put in X, what does only meeting part of it reduce that to?
Yeah, I actually looked at that this afternoon and it's about a third, the water quality portion of the volume of the, at least the underground systems. It's about a third of the volume. So you could almost translate, they translate that to cost. It might be a little higher cost because there's still going to be an outlet structure. But I'd say a third to a half.
Okay. Thank you. What was my other question? Oh, the fee and lieu fund. Sort of jumping ahead because it's the next topic, but on the next topic, we talk about watershed management practice, practices we might undertake as a city, like a fund for purchasing buffer strips and things like that. Would it be appropriate to use these sorts of funds for that type of project or is, would this be used for something else?
So the way I understand with the conversations with the nutrient reduction strategy is that with the watershed activities, at a certain point, I think it's back to 2013 and maybe John Dunn can correct me, 2013, what we've installed can take credit towards that nutrient reduction.
I see.
So if we were to put a regional facility in, then with the nutrient reduction strategy, which you'll be hearing about, we can, can take credit for some of that.
Anybody else, any questions before input?
Do we have any means at all of determining the impact of a project on surrounding properties or properties downstream? I know that we got an assessment of the fairway parking lot and what capacity would be taken up by certain types of rain, but I'm just, I'm trying to think through what the implications are if we don't do anything, if we leave 5B in place or if we loosen things up. Does that change the impact on the neighbors or on somebody further downstream?
We've had several residents who've had problems with flooding in their neighborhoods who have had proposed developments adjacent to their neighborhoods that have approached us and been very concerned about it. And once the developments have gone in, the drainage improvements have really helped to reduce that flooding. Now that's two instances in two neighborhoods across the whole community. You know, when we get seven inches or six inches of rain in two hours, just the whole community is inundated where that occurs.
But in smaller rain events, is it fair to say that there is no real methodology for looking at a particular property and saying that this property has like much more leverage in terms of causing stormwater damage than other properties around town?
Right. So I, in the CIP, we have the storm water system analysis. And maybe when we get that done, we'll have more insight on where there may be some capacity issues in certain areas. But we have a pretty good idea now with our, our maintenance crews of, you know, in a one or two inch rain, we're having problems in this area or residents are good at contacting us. And so we were in communication with those areas.
But I guess what I'm getting at is we're talking about requirements for individual projects on individual sites. And I'm wondering, is there, is there a way to say, well, this site is going, you know, what happens on this site is going to have a bigger impact across town than what happens on other sites? Or is that just too hard a problem to, to take on?
Yeah, I would, I would say it's, it's going to depend on the size. You know, obviously a bigger site that is grass turned to pavement is going to cause more problem than a site that is significantly smaller, like a one house infill lot. So it is going to be size dependent and also relative to the impervious area that they're adding.
Yeah.
To go back to the two properties that we talked about with Gloria's question, I guess, first question would be, well, statement, we're talking about a residential area, I guess that we got more of the complaints from. And so that's typically going to be part of a bigger development that would have stormwater management, it'd be over an acre. Wouldn't necessarily be on the residential side that we'd see that. But then for the developments, were the developments all larger than an acre? So would they be, would they not be exempt from any of this if we did make any changes?
The sites were not, they were actually commercial adjacent to residential.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. You have any idea how big those sites were?
No, I believe they were at least one and a half acres or more. I would, yeah, I don't think they were over an acre.
Any other questions from council? Okay. Seeing none, I would invite any input on this topic. If folks want to give any, we could limit those to three minutes apiece would be good. Anybody?
Evening, council. Justin Dodge, Hunziker Companies, 105 South 16th Street. I prepared a couple of things, so I'll just read it off so I don't miss anything. Thank you for reviewing our stormwater ordinance. After four years of this ordinance, we have found it has unintended consequences and appreciate your review. Here are some thoughts on the topics for tonight. Topic one, maintenance of parking lots. Pavement has an expected life of 30 years or so, much like the roof on your house. If you were to re-riff your house, this is maintenance, just like repaving. The building officials don't make you bring up the electrical inside your house up to today's building standards by doing maintenance. Why should parking lot repaving be any different? The site hasn't changed, the building hasn't changed. Why penalize a property owner for doing maintenance that doesn't cause any more stormwater runoff than before? So under that one, would ask that you support option one. Topic two, if you're following along, I'll go in order too, so that way it's easier for everybody. Financial security. You know, this topic only came up when the language was reviewed about a year and a half ago. The city holds all the power through the Certificate of Occupancy to ensure that stormwater improvements are completed correctly. Anything still outstanding at that point in time should be guaranteed by security when the city has no longer, or no longer has the power of issuing the Certificate of Occupancy. Either option one or option two helps the building community while protecting the city. Moving on to topic three, the runoff curve number. Let's use a current and scientifically proven model on what has, what was on the site before development. We have this in the USDA Soil Survey of Story County. This should be the standard we want to achieve, what was on the site before development. Currently, we're striving for a standard from a 1903 survey and report, 115 years ago, when a surveyor rode around on a horse taking samples. This doesn't seem relevant by today's sampling or surveying standards. We have so much more information and technology, let's use it. He said, currently, we're using arbitrary values based on an unscientific study from the same year the Model Ford was first produced, or Model Ford Model A was first produced. Also, for any trivia buffs, that was the first year of the World Series. So option one seems like a no-brainer. Let's see. Two. And then topic four, stormwater management threshold criteria. The standard set forth by DNR is one acre. If we want to get down to the root of this, this really only affects redevelopment sites since green land development would be over one acre. Let's look at the West First National Bank site as an example. It was a Wendy's. It have, it had pavement to each property pin. Now, First National Bank built on the small lot, reduced the paving, added landscaping while increasing the pervious surface. There would have been reduction in stormwater runoff by them just by redeveloping the site. As it turns out, they had to comply with the 10,000 square foot trigger, costing them well over $100,000. The 10,000 square foot trigger is what stops smaller redevelopment sites in their tracks. You and I want Ames's Core to be cleaned up and improved, just like First National Bank did with the former Wendy's. Changing this criteria allows the smaller local developers to do projects as well, not just the larger out-of-state developers. So certainly appreciate the support in option one A. And then topic five, inspections. This is extremely cut and dry. Option one is supported by staff as well as the building community. So appreciate your support there. Any questions?
Is it okay to ask a question? Just a factual question. I wasn't aware of the investment the First National had to make in that site. So 100,000, what, could you give us a brief description of what was required for that site? Or maybe Tracy would remember?
Yeah. So it wasn't one of our projects. So I'm unfamiliar with all the details, but it was under one acre, but the 10,000 square foot, square feet of pavement triggered it, where they had to detain all the stormwater on site in storm chambers underneath the parking lot.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Neither.
Scott Renault, Fox Engineering. I'm going to take a little different perspective. I'm just going to do option or the first item here. First of all, I could support option number one, but option number one's almost necessary when we have environmental contamination on a site. We've not got a lot of leeway from that and it gets to be a lot more expensive. So I could divide these and I'll give you the pros and cons for each, but to me, option one is a no-brainer if we have an environmental contamination. We should just get a pass and go on with life. And again, we're talking about-
Be clear, you're just talking about the parking lot maintenance?
Yeah, I'm just going to talk about parking lot maintenance. I'm not going to do all the others. I'll come up, I think I have another opportunity to come up. Yes? No? For the next, for the next items. Justin went through all of them because he, I think he interpreted as he was going to get three minutes period. And I'm interpreting I get at least a little bit of time for each one.
Three minutes each? Okay.
Well, you know, you tell me what I have to do.
No, that's fine.
Second option is the water quality standard, which is really the state requirement. And we've gone beyond that. So the state requirement is really option two at the minimum. And so I could see doing that on a lot of sites. And I think you get some ancillary benefit for stormwater control that Liz talked about. You're still detaining a third to a half, depending on how you want to look at the calculations. Option number three is a good example of, I think it needs to be site-specific. It's not always the case that every site has that. And what I mean by that is we do have some areas where there's some flooding of homes that have flooding issues. Well, you do have an opportunity in redevelopment of the site to correct some of these things. But what you're asking is somebody that has a flooding issue doesn't have to pay anything and their neighbor does, right? Well, that's fine if you want to do that, but I think the city needs to participate in that. And really, if you want to use tax agreement financing as your, as your mechanism to do that, say, well, it's a neighborhood thing, we're going to forego the taxes on this redevelopment for three years. And that, you know, cuts down the cost of that. Option four is already in the code and I don't really propose that you even would change that. That piece of code works for not only this part, but for the other parts of the code and new developments and whatnot. And then option five is, I'm not in favor of. Thank you. Any questions?
May I ask you a question?
Yeah.
I just didn't understand what you meant by saying that option two is the state requirement. What are you trying to say?
So the state really just has one requirement that's imposed on them by the EPA, and that is to enforce water quality. So the things that you're doing on top of that, detention, some of the other goals in the unified criteria, remember there's, there's four to five things depending on how you want to look at it. Those are not requirements. Those are things that were added because they're in the stormwater manual and the city perceived there was some benefit to doing those things. But the state and the EPA only cares about the first thing, which is the water quality.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Anybody else?
Yes.
Chuck Winkle Black, Hunziker Companies, 105 South 16th Street. I think one of the things that I represent, a number of clients around town within our organization and outside, and I think what we're seeing is leading to more deferred maintenance. People are saying, look, I want to replace my parking lot, but the numbers are real when you get into the stormwater and they're either finding, saying they're not going to do it, they're just going to let the asphalt continue to deteriorate, concrete get broke up. Because, for instance, and again, it was a little bit larger site, but out on Lincoln Way, the mixed-use project I have out there, it was almost a quarter of a million dollars for the underground. And it's a lot of piping and it's a lot of rock. And particularly on the sites that were infill sites, this is why we're talking about this. It's not new sites where we can plan for stormwater detention areas. If you take that away, you end up that, you have to put it underground, which is the expensive part, because if you try to do it above ground, it reduces the footprint and you can build a much smaller building, all of that. So I really don't think that that's something that we want to do because in my opinion, that's not the best use of the land is to have above-ground water storage. But I think one of the things that you might not be hearing a lot of, but I'm dealing with in representing a number of commercial clients around town, is that people are saying, I guess we're just going to have to put off or we're going to try to skirt it by doing 8,000 square feet this year. And I know that's not what the city wants, is to say, well, you're not disturbing more than 8,000. Then they'll say, well, are you doing the whole thing? Well, we're only doing 8,000 or 9,000 this year. And so I think that you may not be hearing from all the people, but it's frustrating for the property owners that want to maintain their properties to sit there and be in a position. But again, when you're looking at the stormwater implications of that, could be in excess or greater than the cost of the repaving itself. And then we get into, well, it's okay to mill, but if you mill and you've got some places that are, when you get the milling down or you've got some areas that are bad, then if you're going to tear those out, we got to be careful not to fix too many things because then if somebody comes out and measures and you're over a certain amount that has to be cored out, or if you just put a little bit back on top, you're going to be in the same maintenance problem again in a few years. So I would encourage you to, or would like you to support number one, option number one for these infill projects that I think we're getting a lot of, we're going to head the wrong direction in our upkeep if, if we don't find a way to address this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy, can I ask you a follow-up question?
Yep.
So I wondered about this as well, that as a way, as an end around the requirements, the owner of the property would do just partial improvements. Have we seen, seen that? And then if we do, what is our response to someone who's basically going to do their, redo their parking lot incrementally to circumvent the requirements?
So we keep track. It's not 10,000 square feet or less in a year. It's cumulative. So say they do 8,000, then they don't have to do any stormwater that time, but then if they do another 8,000, then they would need to bring it up to compliance.
And so is that for that owner? So property owner one does the 8,000, the property's sold, and then another owner wants to finish that improvement. Is that when it's triggered or is a new clock started? I mean, how, how long do you keep these records?
Yeah, we don't have it, we have it triggered by when the ordinance came into effect, not if it's transferred for ownership purposes.
So it's per property, not per owner?
Correct.
So that's something I never thought about. So a buyer in, in buying a property would have to think through, does this property already have some improvements that have been made that I need to take into account? Because if I want to finish that out, now all of a sudden, I'm going to have to take on the task of that threshold then of the stormwater improvements. I never thought about that before. That's very helpful. Thank you.
Any other input on this one?
I guess I have, I'm still trying to wrap my arms around one of the things that Scott said. Then maybe Scott can answer it. We're talking about, you know, option one versus option two. You're saying option two is a state requirement. I guess I'm confused as to how we could do option one without option two.
Can I mention too, our, our MS4 permit actually from DNR requires us to do the water quality and quantity. So that's where our ordinance reflected both.
And so now we're starting to talk about-
Yeah, don't misunderstand that. That's because you submitted an ordinance to them that they approved. It has nothing to do with what was required. So you submitted a ordinance to them, they said, yeah, that's fine. And they never care if you're going to do more. You know, like it's, you could put in there, we're going to gold plate the parking lot lines and the state would go, oh, that's fine, sounds good to us. What I like about one, two, or three as options, or particularly in options one, two, and three.
Well-
And I'll answer his question.
I mean, you've had your chance to speak on this topic.
But I asked him the question.
Yeah, he answered it though, did he not?
Yeah, but this is ancillary to what, a little bit to what Tim talked about is one, two, and three have no 10,000 square foot threshold. So don't misunderstand. My reading of that is the 10,000-foot threshold just goes away because we're talking about existing parking lots. So don't misunderstand, the 10,000 has nothing to do with options one, two, and three.
Or two and three.
One, two, and three. So you could argue that one is not possible because of the way that this is requirement. They are allowed to make, they are allowed to give exceptions, but they're rarely done. There's some latitude, let's put it that way. Not answering your question, am I?
I guess, yes, I'm still confused. Let's say we pass option one, that doesn't sound like that's good enough.
Oh, the state could theoretically say that that's not good enough. Yeah, it's true. We can certainly ask.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Okay. Sorry.
It's all right. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Seeing none, council?
I'll move option one.
Second.
Liz, did, may I, may I ask a question?
Yeah.
Did I hear you say correctly that in, if we were to require that during any parking lot reconstruction, that they attain water quality standards, then you would estimate that to be about a half to a third of the cost of actually full compliance with 5B as written now?
Approximately.
Yeah, while parking.
Okay.
That, that seems like a lot. I didn't, I didn't really understand that it would be that, that- I didn't, I didn't really understand that it would be that, that high.
Thank you so much, yeah. Yeah, we're in discussion on this, there has been, it's been motion seconded, so I would say on, I, I guess, I'm in favor of more of a compromise. We've been doing a lot of that, and I like it. So there are some options here that I like better, and maybe we could use them in concordance with one another, um, to get to something that might be, um, both approachable for redevelopment of lots, but it would still make, over time, improvements to our stormwater runoff issues, which I think is important too. I mean, I don't want to entirely let that go on, on redevelopment of sites. So I, I like some of these other, you know, options in conjunction, myself.
I guess I like some of the other options better too, although I am not generally in favor of changing our ordinance. I'm sympathetic to the costs involved in this, but I keep running this over and over, and, and it seems like somebody's gonna end up paying, whether it's the project that pays, or whether it's somebody next door downstream when we get more rain than we've gotten previously. So when Justin said that, um, you know, this is like re-roofing a house, the site hasn't changed, there's no more runoff than before, we are getting more runoff because we're getting more rain. And that's the thing that concerns me, that we don't have control of the weather, and Ames is already flood-prone. And so it just seems that we need to be doing the maximum possible to find the opportunities to reclaim some of our flood control. And one of those areas is the impervious surface.
Well, just to clarify, the, I think the, the challenges are on the pronoun "we." And so, uh, I think the person who owns the parking lot is feeling very much that it's not we, it's me. And, and if, if we're committed as a community for, uh, socializing these costs, then we should, you know, and we're actually doing a lot already in terms of flood, flood mitigation in Ames. But I, I'm supportive of option one, because it's, it's really right now, it's all about me and not the "we." And if you want to do "we," then there are ways of doing that. But I think, uh, option one is, is more fair, given the, the burdens that they're having to carry. I'm also concerned, um, about the implications for deferred maintenance. So if we want to see properties redeveloped, um, people making investments in their property, and not letting these parking lots be, uh, run down over time, uh, it's, we need to remove unnecessary pediments of that, so I'm supportive of number one.
Well, and the cost is, is a driving issue on this one, especially on these small redevelopment or maintenance-type situations. Chuck said where it could double the cost of the project. I've seen, I've personally seen at least two projects where they've done exactly what happened there, where they went up to the 9,000 square foot mark and stopped, and the rest of the parking lot is essentially gravel. They aren't planning on touching it ever, um, so that they could afford to do the project that they wanted. It's not that they want to skirt it, it's that they couldn't afford to do a different project than the one that they did. So it, it's, it's very real. I, I understand some of these other things, and I, I guess, looking at it at a very high level, I, I could support an, an option three for specific situations where there is a problem, but making it everywhere, whether there's a problem or not, doesn't seem to make any sense. Or makes it a lot more challenging for people to do projects.
And it, it's not that I'm not sensitive to the cost, I mean, yeah, we definitely, we saw this at Wheatfield, although admittedly, we're increasing the size of our parking lot, so it's not quite the same, but, um, but for me, I mean, I think options two and four in conjunction could, could save quite a bit of cost, but still get us a little gain in our stormwater control. And, and so to me, that's what I mean by compromise. Like, it's, it's cutting down on the cost, so you're cutting, you know, a half to a third perhaps of the cost just to get down to, to quality control. And then, you know, maybe we consider option four up to the 20% reduction or something like that, and that would further allow impervious space without increased cost. And so I, again, that's what I, that's what I mean about the compromise of those other options, I guess.
So I guess I'll ask another question about option four. Option four is essentially there already, so-
Well, I mean-
Up to 10%.
Right, no, I'm saying if we were to consider the-
No, that, that's fair.
Up to 20, or, or the ones where there are, are not-
But, but not taking any action, if, if it stayed at 10%, not taking any action, option four would still be there-
Yeah.
As a result of this.
No, I, I guess I was, I was referring to if we did, if we were considering increasing that.
Well, and I could be more supportive of, of that kind of combination. I can see the, the benefits in doing those things. And actually, when I hear about people leaving half their parking lot gravel, I think, hey, less impervious surface, so that's actually beneficial from that standpoint.
No, that is not something we want to have.
I'm not, I'm not saying we encourage that, I'm just saying-
But we are encouraging that.
Maybe.
Oh, no.
I don't know, I, I have to look at the big picture, which is we get a lot of flooding. And-
And, and I guess when you say flooding, I want to make sure that we're talking about the same type of flooding. If you're looking at this as a flood mitigation for the community, I struggle with that. If we're talking about localized flooding, then that's something we can deal with locally.
Isn't that what we're talking about?
Hyper-locally.
So staff did run some calculations on our parking lot project, because we wanted to give you perspective on that. So if we had just paved, uh, repaved the parking lot with asphalt and didn't do the rock, uh, and the permeable paver system, um, that cost differential was 128,000.
Okay.
It doesn't consider the, you know, fire retention areas and all of that, but it's to compare, uh, the standard parking lot with, compared to the pavers with the rock.
So 120 more to do the impervious-
128,000 more. But we didn't use a proprietary, you know, rock chamber system, we were able to just use rock with the voids in it, um, to gain the capacity out here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have handy the overall, say, footprint of the parking lots throughout the city that we're talking about? I think this is the point you're getting to, is that if you just look at all the parking lots and what's the leverage we're talking about here, and whether we pave them all or make them all bio swales, right? What's, how much difference is that really going to make in terms of flooding in, in the city? Any way to quantify that?
Uh, we actually, in our GIS system, I mean, we can't do it right here on the spot, but in our GIS system, we have the impervious surfaces in there, um, with an area, so we would be able to do an analysis and calculate.
This would just refer to currently existing parking lots between 10,000 square feet and one acre.
Mm-hmm.
Because if they were, if they were an acre, they would trigger it anyway.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, so I understand to answer precisely would be a big undertaking, but does anyone at the table or anywhere have a sort of a, a feeling about this? Do we know what, what we're talking about in terms of scope and, and impact?
I think the scope's even smaller than if you calculate that, you'd have to look at whether or not it's a new or an existing, whether you can fit it on the property, whether you can't, there's, there's other pieces to that. So I, I'm not sure that going through the motions of doing it is gonna give us anything out the other end that could be particularly useful.
I think the, uh, 10,000 square foot parking lot, if I remember right, is anywhere from 30 to 35, sort of space lot typically. So if you're talking up to an acre, that could be, you know, maybe 140 spaces, so you'd be talking 30 to 140 space range.
Okay.
But that's for the other, that's not for this item specifically, we're just talking about whether or not to call it maintenance, 10,000 square feet or less.
Yeah, less than an acre.
No, not really.
No. Not on this one.
Doesn't the acre trigger anyway? No, that's different.
It depends on if you were to exempt maintenance of not increasing the impervious surface.
Then that wouldn't, that measure wouldn't matter at all. You call it maintenance, doesn't matter what size.
Okay.
If you include construction, reconstruction as maintenance, it'd be exempt. Right? Regardless of size.
I see.
Yeah, okay, yep.
So we're exempting larger lots too, by changing that.
You're not increasing, only if you don't increase the-
Yeah, if we redefine maintenance, or if we use maintenance as the definition rather than redevelopment.
But you're not expanding the amount of impervious land-
Yeah.
Under that proposal.
Yeah, I follow. All right, any other counsel questions, discussion? All right. Seeing none? This is all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Nay. Three to three? Nay. So I have a question for staff. I like two, three, and four. Is that something you think, could they all be used together in harmony? Or is there some reason that one would negate or make the others, uh, more difficult?
Yeah, two could be the standard. And then if you liked the fee-in lieu option, we could, we could build that, and as Tracy mentioned, they'd have to have some, show some, uh, cause that they couldn't meet option two to trigger option three. And then if you wanted to expand, um, the 10% to something greater in option four, that could be done as well.
All right.
What about the additional option that Liz and Tracy were discussing as well? The, um, creation of some permeable surfaces in areas that are, uh, overflow parking or fire lanes, that kind of thing?
Right, so you could have, uh, we often have businesses, and it's, you know, the bigger stores that come in and they have a desire for a certain number of parking spaces that well exceeds our required parking spaces. And so in some of those cases, and as we were talking about, they realized that they didn't need to park for the day after Thanksgiving, um, for all of that parking that just sits empty most of the time. And so there was a, a shift in that thinking that, that that area, that overflow area can be, uh, permeable surface or, or a, a supported grass surface that it can be parked on.
So to be fair though, that'd be more expensive, except for the supported grass option I don't know about. But you mentioned, I mean, when you're adding permeable surface, that's, it's a higher cost than impermeable. So would there be any benefit to that financially, to that option? Or tell me more about the supported grass thing, if that would be?
Yeah, so-
Well, it'd be one way to lessen the amount of stormwater facilities, for one thing.
Oh, I see, so you could spend the money on the impervious, uh, parking lot surface instead of like an underground storage tank or something.
Reduce the size of-
Yeah, so the, there's proprietary systems, I'm sure there's several out there, but like, one was called grass pave, that it's, um, a reinforcement that is filled with rock and grass, and then, I mean, it can hold up to the weight of a fire truck even, of that infrequent use, um, of the overflow or emergency response, but it's, um, just one of those options.
Do you see that as something separate from these, as like an option? I suppose it'd be option six.
Yeah, I mean, it could be a version of four, or it could be, or it could be a compliance tool that they could-
All right. Well, I'll take a stab, if you guys want. I would move, um, that we pursue option two and three. And four with the 20% reduction possible, and for any size parking lot.
Do you have any interest in adding there?
Oh, yeah, sure. And to, uh, add an option for overflow parking and fire lanes and such things, um, to be made out of permeable surfaces or whatever, whatever staff recommend on that one.
Second.
I, I think this, this bundle of things would, you know, could drastically reduce costs for developers, right? It's, you know, up to 50% when we're talking about quality only versus quantity and quality. It gives a bunch of other flexibility, um, while still maintaining the goal of improving our stormwater control systems.
I guess I'll say it for the record, I'm, I'm not a fan. I don't think that this does, it gets us to where we need to be on it. I'll probably end up supporting it, because if it fails, we're back to where we were.
What was the last part of the motion on overflow parking?
Um, yeah, to follow staff's recommendation and allowance, and allowance in certain circumstances for overflow parking or fire lanes to be made out of permeable surfaces.
I worry about the law of unintended consequences. I hadn't thought about these options as being consolidated. Um, I'm wondering if there's anyone that would like to speak, if it's possible we could take public input on the implications. This is a big deal, if, if there's someone that could speak to whether we're doing something that would have some kind of unintended consequence, I would sure like to hear that. I have the same concerns as, as Chris, but I'd like to hear if there's, anyone like to speak to the issue of the motion.
I'd certainly open the microphone for that.
I mean, when you look at, you know, some of the things, when we talk about, most of these are sites that exist already, and very few, I can't think of any of the ones that I'm thinking of that would, that are willing to give up 10% of their parking, let alone 20% of their parking, because we're talking about commercial areas where we, a lot of them don't have enough parking, unless we're not talking about Kmart, we're not talking about, that's not, I think, what we're here to deal with. When we were talking about the maintenance, we're of most of the spaces. So my fear is, you're gonna pass a bunch of things that are never gonna get used, and we're gonna be right back where we were before we started tonight. The, I don't know that, you know, your fee in lieu of is unspecified, and it sounds like it's only if you can't get to number two. And again, I think the unintended consequences of, we feel like we're making a compromise, but you're passing a bunch of things that are never gonna be used, and we're gonna be right back where we are before we started.
It isn't just small lots though, because like you said, if we define maintenance, if we define the resurfacing of a lot as maintenance, then even very large lots would be exempt from improvements at that time. So it could be the Kmart, or, I mean, you know, a lot that size, um.
Tracy, I have a question on option three. Apologies, I didn't ask this earlier. Practically, how does this work? In terms of determining the amount of fee that is, I, I don't want to use the word exacted, but it's sort of like that, to be requested from the developer in lieu of. How does one go about determining that amount?
Right, so we would need to establish, um, some certain areas and where it's even feasible to have the city buy some, some land and, um, incorporate a regional facility. And then we would need to, we can, I mean, there's, there's criteria established throughout the country that uses this, um, and have been implementing this in different places. So we can look at different criteria and come back to you with, um, different things, I would say. One's very likely going to be a monetary trigger. We don't have a monetary trigger in the ordinance now, so, you know, people have asked, I think that's the biggest, um, exemption that people have requested to, to not have to do it because of the cost. And so that hasn't been a trigger, but they've been able to do a combination of onsite and offsite through the current ordinance. So that's how the redevelopment on, uh, Lincoln Way that Chuck Winkle Black was talking about, they were able to do, uh, stormwater management from existing conditions and developed that difference, and then they used an offsite facility for their, um, water quality and- and the difference between meadow and good condition and existing runoff.
So it's not arbitrary. I worry about the implementation of these things from staff to staff, your successor down the road. And so there would be some effort to come up with objective criteria that if you're going to do a project of X number of dollars, then Y number of dollars would go towards this offsite project. Am I saying that correctly?
Yes, we don't, we want it to be laid out and we can, can have some meetings to talk, you know, with the development community on what some of those criteria could be. You see some, some of the comments we've received back, you know, talk about if it's a $50,000 parking lot project, that stormwater is going to be an additional $75,000, does it make sense to require it? So maybe there's some sort of criteria, and Liz, do you know, maybe you have some other ones or we'll brainstorm some ideas? Yeah, we can get some, like I said, I know that there are these instances of using fee in lieu around the country.
The one thing I put on the payment of lieu, you have to understand there's a lag time here. The people who are concerned about the runoff and the effect it'll have on flooding, we're building up this pot of money and before we can either raise enough money to acquire the land or find a willing property owner, you're going to have water, you know, stormwater.
And I appreciate that, I was just trying to understand, we're, we're voting to approve something that we really don't have anything in place that we could point to to say, this is what we would be adopting. So you sort of have an agreement to agree that we would adopt something further on?
It would come back when we see the modifications to an ordinance itself, I assume, right?
Yeah, just so I point out, because I know we've had this discussion when we did the rental housing ordinance. Remember what you're doing now is you're going to refer to staff to draw up an ordinance we're going to publish. It will take four votes to pass. So I just want to, want you to all understand that. So it's, hopefully you'll hammer out something that you will, will be able to support with four votes on something here. Remember we got into the rental housing and?
We remember.
I'm just reminding, I think you wanted me to remind you of that.
Yeah, thank you.
Another consideration is that the facility behind the fee in lieu system is not going to be in the neighborhood where all the problems are. It's going to be somewhere in town and if there are localized flooding problems, it may simply be unable to address them.
And we may be able to look up in the watershed, I don't, you know, depending on what, item two with the nutrient reduction strategy, I mean, it could be something that's, that's north of town even, but it's paid into something. So maybe it's not in that specific neighborhood, but maybe it's paid into the watershed.
I'm also, I agree with what Tim pointed out earlier, the distinction between this being a problem with my property and this being a problem for the town as a whole. And I think it is a problem for a city, for the whole city. And so I wonder, is there a way that we can, we actually should be socializing the costs here so it doesn't all come down on, on one developer? I think the option that you've proposed doesn't exactly do that, but we could talk about, would, would tax incentives be possible in this circumstance? I mean.
Well, usually it's based, tax abatement maybe?
Tax abatement, yeah.
We have to check, for state law, you have to abate an incremental value.
Sure.
So I have to think about how you do that.
If there would be much if the parking lot were new versus?
Well, at least that's, that's a step in the right direction, David, I appreciate that.
You could do on the value, oh no, just the maintenance, there won't be a new building attached to it.
Right, I guess not.
It's a step in the right direction. We had an opportunity tonight to really make a, some improvements in this. And I don't, I'm, I'm not going to be supportive of this motion because I just don't think it's actually moving the ball down the field. Maybe we'll just take another counsel down the road to pick this up later, but I don't, I don't think we're solving anything. Yes, the idea of compromise is good if you're actually accomplishing something, but I don't, I don't, I don't see this as a compromise.
Cutting the costs in half is not.
Cutting the increase of the cost in half.
Yeah.
Semantics, but real.
Sure.
No, it was a real semantics.
Cutting the increase of the cost in half.
Is there potential for us to look at, at least in, in some neighborhoods, using CDBG money?
If they're qualifying neighborhoods.
But that wouldn't apply everywhere.
No, CDBG has only been those little moderate incomes, hasn't it?
And that's all earmarked, really, I mean, the CDBG.
Well, it is right now, but, you know, we change our allotments.
You're going to be talking about priorities soon.
Yeah.
And, and most of these are in commercial areas, so I guess I'm not really sure how CDBG is really going to help with that. It may help in very specific situations. Plus, we also have a certain amount of money in the budget every year to take care of localized flooding problems, don't we? It's an ongoing budget item.
Yeah, I just feel like we're all acknowledging that we're trying to bring down the cost, but we're really not actually doing anything about it.
We are bringing down the cost, or this would. Anyway.
Well, my, my goal is not to bring down the cost, my goal is to.
Well, I think when you're talking about CDBG funds, you're acknowledging that there are costs associated with this.
I acknowledge there are costs associated with this.
Perhaps shouldn't be borne by individuals.
If I had my druthers, we wouldn't change this ordinance, but I know that's not going to pass, so I'm not making that motion.
Well, why, I'm going to tease it out just a bit, I don't want to prolong this meeting tonight. But why, why shouldn't we be concerned when we're getting feedback, the properties aren't being redeveloped?
I didn't say we shouldn't be concerned, but I have to weigh, I have to weigh my concern for individual projects against my concern for what I see happening in Ames when we have flooding. And it's inevitable that these flooding incidents impact more than one property. And so that's what I'm looking at, Tim. It's not that, that either one of these sides is being shunted to one side as less important, but I have to try and balance which I see as the driver behind this ordinance. And I, I see it as a community issue, not just an individual project.
Yeah, we're going back over the same ground again. It's, it's not a community project when it's, it's that one property owner that has to pay the full freight on the cost. Let's, let's do the vote, I'll call for a vote.
Okay. All right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Comes back as an ordinance.
So I would move option five, which is to leave.
Wait, no, I'm still, I'm still thinking.
Oh, she's got a vote, doesn't she?
Yeah, I'll say nay. Oh, that's fine. All right, now the floor is open.
I don't think we need to make a motion.
Well, we can.
We can, but let's just move on.
Yeah. On the second issue of financial security then.
So financial security is something that we got results from the online survey as well. As we had mentioned in the June staff report, there's an option for temporary occupancy as well as final occupancy. We've received feedback, as you can see, it's kind of split as far as temporary versus final. Right now, they're required to provide financial security with their site plan approval. And then they get released as we receive ASBILT information. So that is something that can be done in part or in whole as the system is, is constructed. But they need to prove that they have the, the release rates and volumes and everything that complies with the approved stormwater management plan. So as you can see, there's three options there. Option one would be prior to temporary occupancy, option two is prior to final, and then option three is keep it as currently exists.
Any questions?
I guess my only question on this one would be, if we did final occupancy, what, how many projects really get to the ASBILTS and get through the review process before final occupancy? And/or how does or can the temporary occupancy permit string out until that's done? I guess I'm trying to figure out why we really need financial security here if really we're going to stop the final financing of a project or the transfer of that property or anything without a final certificate of occupancy. And I'm going to be, I guess in this case, I'm really more specific or more concerned about the property owner who builds one building in their entire lifetime in, in going through this process. Developers probably don't want to do this either, but they're used to providing financial security, they have the bonding relationships, they have all those kinds of things. Asking somebody to come up with the money or to go through a process of finding something, I guess I'm not really sure if, if we have another hammer to be able to do this.
I'm not totally clear on your question.
Are you thinking we're asking for a bond then too?
Well, I mean, you have financial security, a letter of credit or, I mean, it's financial security of some variety, bond, letter of credit, whatever. I guess if, if we do make final occupancy the, the trigger, how often does the ASBILT, do the ASBILTS get through the review process before final occupancy? There's question number one. Or is that a process that strings out potentially a very long period of time?
It does, it does, and we had one that just, that we received the ASBILTS on that they constructed it not like the stormwater management plan. And so they had to go through and completely update the stormwater management plan. It's bringing to, to their attention that they are not getting the volumes that they had needed in their stormwater management plan, so they're going, having to go back onsite and make modifications. I would say a lot of the, the apartment complexes that we've been having have been getting temporary occupancy and we're having trouble with them going back and, and finishing the items and it's getting really strung out. We have several that are outstanding, still under temporary occupancy. But we've received, we, we keep asking for ASBILTS and we did just receive a, a big stack of them because we're saying, hey, it's going to snow, you need to get out there and survey, get these, get the ASBILTS. So we're, we're ready to review the ASBILTS as soon as we, we get them so that we can release the, the financial security.
But have you ever had to call the financial security? Or you're just holding it?
We're just holding it. At a certain point, we need to come to you to say, we have this, they're not responding, what else can we do? Because they're occupying the building.
Should I take input?
Yeah, it's fine.
Anybody want to give input on this specific topic? Okay, seeing none.
I think Chuck's leading out.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Hey Chuck, if you could speak to this in general, I, I don't know that people have an appreciation for the differences between these options, if you could flesh that out a little bit, that'd be helpful.
Well, the big thing is, and I would compare it to like when we do a final plat for, you know, we have to bond for the improvements that are not yet completed and accepted by the city. The big heartburn with this is, is the way it's currently doing, we have to bond for the entire amount of all the improvements before any of it starts. So even when you get done before you get either a temporary or a final certificate of occupancy, before you start, you have to get the city a letter of credit for the entire amount of the entire project. So I can't imagine being at a point where you get to whether you're doing either a temporary or a final and the bulk of the work is not done. I think that's where the real heartburn comes in, is those are sometimes big numbers upfront. Where like, for instance, if we get down and we need a final plat and we haven't done the top lift of the asphalt and we work with the city staff all the time and we agree what's done, what's not done, what the city's accepted, what they've not accepted, and then we have to provide financial security for what's not done so the city is not at risk. That's where I would like to see this go, is saying rather than all the dirt work that has to be done as part of some of these stormwater management systems, well, they know that, you know, they can see where the detention pond is done and maybe we have to go back in and dredge something out because we've, because the, the detention area is doing as it should and that's collecting that sediment onsite or we don't have the ASBILTS done, but it's not, because sometimes these are hundreds of thousands of dollars on some of these projects upfront, where in the end, the city can go out and they can say, yep, your pond's built, your stormwater, your pipes are in, that kind of stuff is done, but you haven't proven to us that everything's working like it should. And if we could negotiate that number, that would be much more palatable than, again, that's where this whole thing started was having to, before we could do anything, having to get all the numbers and all the things, get the city to agree to those numbers and get the financial security before we can do pretty much anything.
So which option do you support?
Well, either the, either one or two, I mean, two before they give the final is the one that, because again, there, there is, and particularly when we get to Iowa where we could really only, we're basically not shut down now, but we've had a, we had a wet fall where we couldn't, we had to struggle to get things done. Then we got unseasonably cold early where the ground's frozen already, so it's, so that, that started basically in October. So we're October, November, December, January, February, March, April, you know, we're seven months out of, before we can finish up and do some of the things. We can do the measurements to give them the ASBILTS, the engineers can go out and do their surveys and that kind of stuff. But again, would like it to be, it's the timing of it that really has given me the heartburn of this. And again, I just ask you to treat it like you do the other things we do at the city where, hey, if you're not done, let us verify what you do have done and give us financial security. And just like some of the things we have to estimate, like we do for seeding and those type of things where we don't have ground cover established, we can negotiate and come up with reasonable numbers with the city staff. We do it all the time. It's the big number upfront before you do anything that really causes me the heartburn.
Thank you.
Just want to reiterate what Justin and Chuck said, I agree with. Also, the way this works is, is the bond form is, is, from the bonding company's standpoint, is, is a worthless document. You're asking a owner to be tied via a bond to somebody that doesn't have ownership in the product. So most of these are not bonds, you're, you don't have any bonds. You're either getting a letter of escrow, or a letter of credit and escrow, or, or escrow funds, one of the two. Well, letter of credits have their own issues and the way your counsel has approached those is that they have to be on a local bank, because letter of credits can be revoked at any time for any reason and they generally only have a one-year life. They're also extremely expensive in the tune of 2% to 5% of your yearly thing, so you're spending an awful lot of money upfront. The bond form that you talk about is, doesn't, it never happens, it never works. We had a project, the courtyard by Marriott, delayed six weeks because of this requirement, for absolutely no reason. The pipe is sitting out there, ready to go in the ground and we're ready to go and we're waiting because we have to work out this little piece of agreement. It's, this is the most frustrating piece of the code. I'm disappointed you didn't do something on this option, this first issue, but this is extremely frustrating because it amounts to huge delays and extra costs that, that's unnecessary.
You have preference, Scott, in which of these?
The only, one or two are fine, the only thing I don't like on the terminology is the total estimated construction cost, because that sounds like the cost that we have at the beginning, not at the end. In other words, we may have, we may put in 90% of it and for instance, if vegetation is one component, we have 10% left at the end and yet we're bonding for the entire amount, that doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me. So I like that definition to at least be refined.
So would you like it more of the remaining construction cost?
Yes, that'd be fine.
Estimated remaining construction.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else on this one?
That was a good catch by Scott on the total, I missed that, this version. So it's really important that it's outstanding or remaining instead of total. Thanks.
Counsel?
I'll move option two with remaining rather than total. Estimated construction cost to be on file with the city prior to a final certificate of occupancy being granted.
Second.
Right. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
So why did you go with, with the final instead of the temporary?
A temporary can get strung out for other reasons beyond this. So it could be, well, it could be a number of other things. And final is a big hurdle to cross. So I'm fine with that. There still have the financial security on hand, it's just for a much shorter period of time, hopefully.
So from a staff perspective, could you speak to, is the city taking on any substantial risk? I want to think, worst-case scenario, are we taking on any additional risk by making this move to option two? And if, so how would you help us think about that?
So there can be sites that get an approved site plan, start construction, walk away from it, never get towards the temporary or final occupancy, or if they are phasing it. So it's just part of the risk. That if they, they choose not to, to go into the build-out, for whatever reason, then they walk away, and then we have a site that is either partially completed or not constructed with those stormwater requirements.
How often does that happen?
Um, yeah, not, we haven't, haven't had that.
All right. Just curious.
Yep. Okay. So, yeah, he asked the risks. That's the only one.
No, 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 no. Worst-case scenario. Yeah, I got you.
It's, you know, the same thing with the public infrastructure, as Chuck was talking about with the, the final plat. After they get preliminary plat approval, they can install streets and water mains and sanitary and storm sewer. Anything not fully accepted, then with final plat, then we get the financial security.
Okay.
Cool.
Right. Any?
Do you have any concerns with the, the change in language from the total estimated cost to the remaining estimated, estimated cost?
No, we would just need to have, I know it's coming, either partial ASBILs or ASBILs of some sort, so that we can accept part of it, if there's a partial.
Thank you. All right. Any other discussion? All right. If not, we'll go on that motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Issue number three, runoff curve number.
Okay, so here's the, we've already received some input here on this. This is the one that, there was a lot more detail here in the, the June 26 staff report that referred to the soils of Story County. That is a NRCS, USDA, you know, all those references keep coming around, the soil surveys. The intent was to improve, go back to a historic landscape, so thereby detaining and, and holding that capacity further and reflective of the historic landscape, which is what that 1903 soil survey that was referenced discusses. The 82% of the soils in Story County were the Class B soils, with that reflection of the meadow in good condition. So as you can see, there's, it's a pretty technical thing to ask for an online public input on. So, you know, maybe going forward with your questions and, and maybe the, the comments, and then we can circle back if there's a question on.
Yeah. So you said that 82%, yeah, 82% of the soils are represented by that 58 runoff curve number. But, so in option one that you have here, for the options, to amend it so that we're using the USDA soil survey for each site.
Yeah. So that would be considering current soil conditions, which would be what some of the input has been, that they wanted to use the existing conditions, instead of taking it back to the historic landscape.
How often does the USDA soil survey get issued? Is it updated on a regular basis?
I don't know if it's on a schedule, because there's one from the 80s, and then one that's a little more recent. But I don't know if they have a frequency or not.
The, the question I had on this one, more than the others for some reason, do we have a sense of best practices? If we look at peer communities for this one, how, how would you help us think about best practices in this?
Yeah. So it's, it's pretty common nationwide to be going back to a historic landscape, to not only go from a, you know, the soil was compacted and, and already compacted, and then just more compacted, and, and doing that runoff. Some of my experience has been that they even have classified the soils, even downgraded the soils, so that they can get an even bigger impact than what we're asking for, because they see that the soil health and the soils make such a big difference. Our, our stormwater management even allows the water quality to be treated within just a decompacted soil horizon. If they are to get organic matter and decompact it, and there's sheet flow over grass areas, they can actually treat their 1.25 inches per acre on that. It just, it says how important the soil health is.
And can you give us an idea of what an average number for current conditions of Story County soil, what a runoff curve number for, on average, what that would look like compared to the 58?
For instance, a quarter acre lot, type B soils would be 75 for a quarter acre lot, one acre lot, 68. Urban districts is obviously higher at 92 for commercial, developed conditions. So you could have a site that's redeveloped, you know, torn down, and they would be able to use a higher curve number, and just do that differential between the 70 or high 80s or 90s.
I see.
So I guess one of the questions I guess I asked earlier in the week, and I understand why we can't get the information, is, is a map of this. We're looking at a survey from 1903, and it's aggregated across the county. So one of the things I'm trying to wrap my arms around is, you look at the county, and you look at city of Ames, and you look at historically what the city of Ames has been. We've got the rivers, we've got floodplains, we had a swampy downtown. I'm, I'm trying to figure out how the, the city fits into that larger county number. Can you help me think about that at all?
Right. So you'd have the 82% that's, and then your waterways, like you mentioned, are going to be on top of that 82%. Above the 82%. So when you, yeah, I mean, you're going to have the drainage areas and the, the wetlands on top of that 82%. We have a lot of waterways in town, but it's going to be throughout the county that that was considered.
And the other 18%, if you look at the 1903 survey, what soil type would those be? Are those also type B soils, or they?
It was clay, a lot of clays, where it says the remaining five types, thus covering less than 20%.
Looks like most.
You know, there's a lot of clays in there, and some fine sand, which we have, we're going to be more in the sandy soil where we are, like T Garden area is very sandy. We hit some pockets up in the different areas of the Squaw Creek. When you're in the influence of that riparian buffer, you're going to hit some more sandy type soils. But I know like the South 16th and T Garden area, there's a little more sandy soils. But we have a lot of groundwater that goes through there, too.
All right. Any other clarifying questions? Otherwise, I'll open this up. Two for input? All right. Seeing, oh, sorry.
Sure. Liz, could you pull up that table again? Or I guess it was John had it.
Oh, that table?
Zoom out just a little bit, and then slide it up. So Story County is primarily agriculture. We have a tremendous amount of row crops. So if we take the exact same class of soils, Class B, and we look down at what 90% of our county is, would be row crops in good condition, so a curve number of 78.
Scott Renault again. I might give an odd answer here, because I don't care. And the reason being is, is the 58 really to me just says, we're going to be super conservative all the way along. But yet, we have five different things that we have to do. So what we are doing is piling one conservative thing, unconervative thing, and conservative thing, and we're overkilling it. And so that's where this number comes from, is, is just a level of overkill. So if we're in an existing area, and we've designed drainage structures, we've been using, to develop for the runoff, we've been using 72 to 78 for the number. And so the existing systems that are out there, all the bridges, all of the culverts, most of the storm sewer that's already there is already designed for those numbers. And now we're designing to be more conservative on top of that. And then we add our unified criteria, which has the five things, and now we're just, we're just continually adding things to it. So all we're really asking is for some relief upfront, because all the other things are very conservative. That's the way I look at it.
So you'd be recommending?
Well, I don't know. If you want to use a constant number, the ease of this system is you just pick one number and you just go with it. I understand that. There's some value into that. So the number that I would use would be between 72 and 78. Would be fine with me. And again, it's not, I like the ability to be able to pick the number, but it's just a matter of being conservative over and over and over and over again. And I won't go into why that all is, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else from the public on this one? Okay. Seeing none, counsel?
Since we've heard that it's been, it's been common nationwide to go back to the historic landscape, I would move that we direct staff to maintain the current number.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
Could you speak just a little bit to the issue of how this is in practice administered? So if, if we were to go with a different plan, how does that change the way in which development is done? This is still a bit fuzzy to me. How much, how much actual work does it take for staff?
No, not for staff. What does the impact have on the developer?
Well, both. I mean, the staff have to give oversight, but also for the developer in terms of having a plan that fits this, the soil type.
Right. So we would need to look at each site specifically, unless a new curve number was specifically stated to update all of our documents and the ordinance and the technical guidance documents. So say it's between the 72 and 78, as Scott mentioned, then you're going to have higher release rates, and you're going to have less volume detained.
So slower, or smaller facilities need to be constructed as a result?
Correct.
And you just have some formulas, you work it through somehow, and you figure out what the capacity is based on the characteristics of the site and this number?
Yes. It's part of the, the formula and the routing.
We've had a lot of discussion tonight about the price tag of some of these things. Is there a way, is there any effort to try to put a price tag on the difference between a 58 and a 78? Is that possible to quantify financially, or is that too much?
Hmm, that would probably take us some time to, to calculate.
Okay.
Yeah, we'd have to run probably some scenarios.
But is it fair to say that the difference between 58 and 78 probably wouldn't result in not needing to build a facility at all?
You would still need to build a facility. So it's just the incremental. And at this point, we're talking about the, primarily the big, the stormwater basins. We're not talking about the water quality of the bioswales or bioretention, or, you know, we're talking about the quantity control, the flood control.
So it's how big of a tank?
Yes. Or basin, the ponds.
But either one would meet the quality.
The quality is 1.25 inches per acre. It's, it's a set. It's not the curve number. The, the curve number is used with the quantity. So it, yeah, it's used in calculating your, your release rates, your volumes.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion? All right. And just to reiterate, Gloria, your motion was option two?
Option two.
To maintain. All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries? Issue four.
Issue four. And this is where we talk about the impervious cover, and this is where the 10,000 square feet versus a one acre or somewhere in between. We got comments back, and then we included information again about some of the thresholds, demonstrating what some other communities are doing. And so option one would be to increase that to one acre, and then with the knowledge that we may see some areas that have some additional localized flooding. But then option two is to maintain what it currently required. So you could come up with option three or anything in between, if there were some other criteria that you wanted. So this, this again is going to go back to your quantity, your flood control, not necessarily that water quality, because the water quality would still be required.
All right. Any other questions for staff from counsel before input on this one?
So Tracy, I want to tease out a little more your comment. The change to this requirement may result in additional localized flooding and increased cost of geo-bonds. It seems pretty speculative. Could you help us think through, how, how did you reach that?
Oh, as you can, you saw with the previous reports, we have quantified what runoff from a one acre site is going to be. And so with that comes our existing storm sewer system, and whether our existing storm sewer system can, can manage something that's going to flow into it, or be flowing within the, the street network, or, you know, adjacent property.
But the, the incremental change between our current standard to one acre But the incremental change between our current standard to one acre, it just seems like a hard thing to try to, to be able to quantify. I don't know.
Yeah. So you're talking the difference between 10,000 square feet or over 40,000 square feet of pavement that water is shedding from, whether it's controlled or uncontrolled. So four times, over four times the amount.
All right. Any other counsel questions? All right. Public input on this one?
Scott Renault. Should have done what Justin did. I'm getting tired of walking up here. So issue one and issue four are related. Issue four doesn't have anything to do with new sites really in the way this is written. So you kind of skipped over issue one. I think you made the wrong decision on that. I think option two was the one that you could justify to the DNR and move forward with. I think you would have had a hard time with option one, perhaps with the DNR approving that. But this comes down to these existing sites, what we're trying to do with them. And so we're trying to increase it from 10,000 to one acre. Staff's interpretation of this 10,000 square foot is not written in the code. In other words, they say 10,000 square foot. You know, it's, it's the first time and then the second time you do something, you got to do it. That's not the way the code is written. So we could argue about that, but we won't. So it somewhat clarified something that needs to be clarified already. But again, this is, this is the, really almost a fifth option to that issue number one is change the acreage. I would have rather you have done the other part first. So again, we're doing everything, again, we're being awful conservative and we're not improving things. We're throwing money away is what we're doing. Don't misunderstand. When we're, when we're overkilling these things, we're spending money and that does not really do us any good. Now, in some places, it might do us some good. And I can use, if you want me to give you examples, I certainly can. McFarland has a parking lot in West they need to redo. It's going to gravel because they don't know how to maintain it. We've already used a 10,000 square foot on that site. So what are we going to do with it? Well, we could build some storage in it, but how much? So it goes back to this one acre. Do we get one acre free or 10,000 free? And then are we overkilling something? Yeah, because we already have storm sewer that was designed for a developed condition, not a prairie condition, was designed downstream for a developed condition. And so we're overkilling that. Storm sewer is designed to discharge the five-year flow. And the staff has redefined that as prairie. And when it was originally designed, it was designed as pavement. So the storm sewer is already bigger than it needs to be in most cases on these new sites. So we're overkilling that. You understand? So, and then what we're talking about is we keep everything else on top of that. So everything else has to be stored. That 100-year event is now stored on site, which that's what really is costing them money. All right? There are some elements of the water quality that cost a little bit more, but in essence, that extra volume. So we, again, we're being super conservative because of that. And so to me is, I'd rather you didn't do this and did option two for issue one. I think that's a lot better thing. And if you want to look at your localized flooding issues, then it's a we, not a me situation. I think, Tim, you've really defined that quite well.
One question. Is the McFarland lot larger than an acre?
Oh, yeah. They have a. It's what? One and a quarter. Yeah.
So even if we changed the impervious cover threshold to the land disturbance threshold, they'd still have to?
No. I can get around it for now.
That's what I want to hear.
No, I mean, you know, I'm clever about things. You know that because you change the ordinance on me, you know, once or twice a year on something I do. Been here before. So typically what we're going to do is we're going to overlay lots that are in bad shape instead of, of tearing them down to the surface. So I mean, that's what we're doing.
Sure.
Reading straightforward about it. We're using some different technology to do that, but, but not accomplishing anything. And I think you want to, if you want to accomplish some stormwater things, then, then work with this a little bit.
Scott, can I ask you something? When you said staff, you said something about staff's interpretation of the 10,000 square foot, what?
There's no time element listed in the 10,000 square foot limit. It just says 10,000 square foot. It doesn't say this project, that project, this ownership. And it gets even more complicated in a situation like McFarland because McFarland is originally a site plan that included McFarland all the way to what was the old Kmart. That's all one system. The mall's the same way. It's all one system. Okay?
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good evening. It's in 2519 Chamberlain. I thought Justin did a great job of kicking off the, the overtures of this meeting by acknowledging counsel coming to, to the table to talk about new ideas of revisiting the, the code. Little disappointed in the outcome. And so I'll, I'll challenge the council to reconsider number or the first issue that we discussed. And Scott's right. I think the second one, issue four, is related very much to that. And so I think one of the things that's important, particularly to, to me is infill sites. And so we have specific sites that have existing utilities, existing infrastructure, public services to that. And the cost to redevelop those sites because of some of this stormwater is a massive increase. And it's a burden to, to seeing that, that investment in some of these infill places. By relaxing or moving that threshold from 10,000 square feet to one acre, so it aligns with the, with the one acre of disturbed, I think that would be a real benefit to our community. We'd see people come in and make it a little bit easier to say yes to an investment in our community. As we go back, just thinking about issue one, and I wish I would have spoken up to it, I think that's a real opportunity to improve that. We're talking about maintenance activity. And there's a lot of maintenance that's going to be coming down our, our schedules and capital expenditures of seeing our parking lots deteriorate and change. Justin's right. They last 30 years at best. And I'd hate to see our nice buildings and our nice community dominated by gravel parking lots and drive around and point out and say, well, hey, this was, this is because it costs so much for us to, to do a maintenance activity on our, on our parking lot.
Luke, could I, could I ask you to, and if you don't have the answer?
Yeah.
This may be a Chuck question. I don't know. So not all of our commercial areas are the same. And so the financial incentives to redevelop a stretch along South Duff are, there are different dynamics than on East Lincoln Way.
Sure.
I'm very interested in East Lincoln Way. We don't talk about it very much. I'm very interested in this. And so there are a number of properties there that I'm wondering if we made a difference, made a change on the threshold to make it one acre, would that create some options and some opportunities for redevelopment along some of those properties? That there, the margins because of the properties are such, they don't have the financial value. Would, could that be a real difference maker in some of those properties?
Yeah, I'm a big believer in catalyst projects. I think somebody that takes a risk, that says, hey, I'm going to do something different than the traditional or what it's always been, that person who takes that risk, that makes that investment could spur on additional investment around it. So by lowering that threshold or making it easier, I do think that could have an impact across that area.
Would you think, would you agree with me that, that areas of town like, like East Lincoln Way that don't have the market value in some ways are more sensitive and perhaps would have a greater level of benefit from a relaxation of the standard? Is that fair to say?
I would agree with that.
Okay.
Yep. So just to wrap up, thanks for the question. Very much in support of option one A under our issue four that we're discussing right now. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
For short, guys, pull this back down. One thought I had just on, and we talked about it before, and it might, and I don't know if it's possible or not, that, and I mentioned, I think, when we talked about this the last time, is would there be an opportunity to put a budgeted amount in the CIP as a pool that could be used for these things that do affect the entire community? And then you can deal with it when we are at the site plan level and you could have staff come back and say, you know, this area, I mean, because we have some areas in town where we don't even have storm sewer to, to really have the capacity or that our storm sewer is lacking in some areas. But what if we would set up, just like you do with the downtown facade program or whatever, where you set up a pool of money that may be used for these things that are for the greater good of the community? And then I don't think it's a huge number every year of these things that we're, that we're talking about. And I think it might, if you use it as a pool of money, just like we have with other programs and say, you know what, we're out of money this year, but apply next year. And then I'd rather see that, again, it solves the problem that we're talking about getting to some of the things, allows better planning. So some of the property owners could say, all right, we can maybe do that next year or plan for part of that, maybe even incrementally to phase in some of the, you know, the projects to be done so that we're not trying to find ways to skirt things. We're trying to find ways to get them done. And then if the money's not used, it could roll over or it just might be a way to, Tim, to your point, to say, hey, this is a, we're trying to solve this for all of the community. Doesn't, it affects everybody positively and doesn't adversely impact one property owner and come to the staff. Staff might say that there are sites that doesn't make sense or we're not going to get any real benefit. And so we're not, don't need to go through this exercise, but let's try to find some meaningful solution that we're going to do rather than, you know, pass a whole bunch of things that, that will just sit on the books that don't do the city or the property owners any good.
And Chuck, just, I didn't know if you were acknowledging what I asked Luke about. So would you agree with me on the issue of East Lincoln Way, that there are some marginal properties that would benefit from a relaxation of the standard?
Well, you and I had also, I think, talked one time about, you know, moving the Resource Recovery Plant. And I think that's probably is, is much of an impediment to things developing commercially along East Lincoln Way is that's not a real draw for people to say, to use that as their landmark to say, hey, we're, come see us, we're by the Resource Recovery Plant.
You weren't supposed to share that. That was supposed to be a secret idea.
Okay.
But aside from.
I think, again, you know, when we talked about the Lincoln Way corridor thing, we were, we still have not created any more commercial areas. So East Lincoln Way is a natural one because we have a four-lane road there. Just saying there are some serious impediments along there and the Resource Recovery Plant is one of them, but we're going to have to look at that. The, the need for more commercial land is real.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So Chuck, wait a second. With, with regard.
No corrugated metal in there either.
No corrugated metal, yes. So with regard to the options, are you in favor of option one A or option two?
Again, I would.
Abstaining?
I would like to think that if, and maybe you can't, but I think the real issue, we kind of, you know, I think all of you were, we were frustrated in the audience and I think around the dais, you were frustrated that nothing could be resolved in the first topic that we taught, that we discussed tonight. So maybe we should step back and you guys put your heads together and us, and maybe we can come up with something to redevelop it because I think the audience and everybody around the dais is frustrated that we, that we couldn't come up with something. So Scott's right, this is a different way of dealing with number one. So yeah, I'd rather have you do something than nothing again. But I think that if, I think we can come up with something that we can all agree on. It just doesn't look like it's going to happen the couple of days before Thanksgiving. But I hope we don't give up on it.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else?
I'm Roger Kalisner, 2702 Cottonwood, but I'm here representing McFarland Clinic. You're exactly right, all the previous comments, four relates to one. Appreciate all the dialogue and the discernment about this, but I, I hear you keep getting back to kind of what are some practical implications? Let me remind the council what I came here and spoke about in April. Our West Ames facility, we bought that facility four years ago. We've occupied it since 98. It was a great project in 98 to rehab that old Hy-Vee into a clinic. But we have dire needs to redo that lot. So we naively went in, said, let's redo the lot. And so we went out, got some pricing estimates and came up with a estimate well over a year ago now of over $450,000. Came into staff for just an informal review of it, saying we're getting ready some plans. And they said, oh, we've got the stormwater issue, Raj. Went back and incorporated that and came back with a pricing estimate 60% higher, over a quarter million dollars more, just to hang some numbers on for you. And I could put that in terms of healthcare, you know, that's a lot of babies being born and Band-Aids being put on and patients being treated to put money into that type of thing. And that's what led us to come to the council and seek some addressing of this issue. And I also in April, I reminded, or at least let the council know that if you look at our other major site here in Ames at 1215 Duff, it's much larger than West Ames, probably double the amount of parking we have there. And I realize it's very controversial for parking. We are going to be very hamstrung on just practically how to figure how to store water in that site with what we've got there. And we haven't even begun to try to tackle that. And so I just wanted to give you some of the reality we're dealing with. I appreciate the engineers and the developers and all the people that they represent as clients. Well, I'm the only actual person here that represents an organization that writes those checks and tries to figure out how to find funds to fund something like this in the environment we're facing in healthcare now. So just to get you back to kind of the practical side of what we as one of the folks in the community deal with in this type of issue. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Seeing none, counsel? Issue four.
I'll try one A. Second?
I would say this does also seem like a compromise. I mean, because issue one and issue four are related, I, I would have preferred options two, three, and four on, on issue one. But yeah, this is a compromise, too, I think. Any other discussion, comments from counsel? All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. All right. Issue five.
Issue five is inspections. And so we've had meetings between Public Works and building inspections and talked about which different components have been required to have a licensed plumber and which ones we can incorporate, how we might make some modifications. So what we've talked about is that we can update our supplemental specifications to require, and our technical documents to require video of installation of the storm sewer so that we can inspect it through that video, which is very common. We even get those videos with our public infrastructure. And then there will be certain components that like the connection to that public storm sewer that they would need to be inspected a little closer to make sure because it's harder to see completely on video. So this is something that if you direct us, then we can, can just incorporate it without need for ordinance change.
Okay. Sounds good. I don't think anybody really needs to speak on this, do they? I mean, can. We're probably good. Counsel?
I move option one.
Second? All righty. Any discussion? All right. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you. That's it for item one in our workshop. Let's take.
Run. Sorry, before you go to break, could I just point out that I, I like the ideas that Chuck brought forward and I hope that we'll revisit those.
Which ones?
As we're moving forward.
The, say it again, the CIP.
Yeah, the pool of money opportunity, that kind of thing. I, I do think that it's worth our time to look at that and discuss what. I do think that it's worth our time to look at that and discuss what mechanisms we might have.
Good. That could come in council comments if we want to proceed it. All right, we'll take a five minute break. Item two on our workshop agenda is nutrient reduction strategy study. Take it away, staff.
Good evening, council. This is an agenda item that will require no decisions of you this evening, so it'd be a nice way to wrap it up for you. Periodically over the last few years, I've given you an update on the development of the Iowa nutrient reduction strategy and what the potential ramifications were for the Ames Water Pollution Control Facility to meet the goals of that reduction strategy. In 2016, we did receive a draft permit from the state that included language that would have required us to start doing a feasibility study for converting the WPC plant to nutrient reduction. The state ultimately pulled that permit back and it was never issued, so we don't have a mandate that required that study right now. But what we do have, and you'll hear a little bit about this in the presentation, is some infrastructure that needs some maintenance at a pretty high price tag, millions of dollars worth of maintenance. And we didn't want to make a decision moving forward on that until we knew how that infrastructure fit in with what nutrient reduction at the plant would look like, because we didn't want to invest $8 million in something that was going to need to be torn down in a couple of years. So that's, that's what really drove us to, to start this evaluation, even ahead of having a permit requirement that we do the evaluation. So earlier this year, we entered into a contract with HDR to perform that feasibility study for us. The goal of that study was to find the most appropriate way to meet the goals of the Iowa nutrient reduction strategy, but in a way that minimized to the, to the extent possible and practical, the impact on ratepayers. That was really what our goal was that we were looking forward to. So I want to introduce a couple of folks that are here with me tonight. Dave DeChant, sitting beside me, will be the primary presenter. He's been our project manager from HDR. Jim McElvogue, who's our WPC facility superintendent, sitting here beside me. Behind me is Lance Aldrich from Fox Engineering, who's also been a part of the team doing the evaluation for us, and Christina Murphy, our assistant director. So Dave, I'm going to let you take over the presentation.
Thank you much for the opportunity to be here tonight to talk with you about the nutrient feasibility study. So as John indicated, our objective tonight really is to provide a high level overview of the work that's been completed to date and really to identify the recommended path forward to give you an opportunity for some direction. So I'm going to run pretty quickly through a 25 minute or so presentation here that kind of provides you some of the background, kind of provides you an overview of some of the alternatives we looked at, and then outlines the strategy that we want to move forward. And then at that point, we'll open it up for any discussion or guidance that you would like to provide. So we'll start off with the drivers. The primary driver is really the Gulf hypoxic dead zone, oxygen depleted area in the Gulf of Mexico that's shown in this figure right here. And it's really been attributed to nutrients, nitrogen and phosphorus that runoff from the Mississippi Valley Basin, which is really a third or more of the central part of the country. So that's really the primary driver for, for the nutrient reduction strategy, although we don't really want to overlook the local nutrient related water quality issues that are affecting some of the watersheds closer to home as well. So Iowa nutrient reduction strategy, what it does is target a 45% overall reduction in nitrogen and phosphorus leaving the state of Iowa. There's two components to it. There's biological nutrient removal, which I'll refer to as BNR at times, a biological nutrient removal for the point sources like the Ames wastewater plant, or voluntary reductions for non-point sources. And back on the biological nutrient removal for point sources, what they're requiring is a 75% reduction in phosphorus, 67% reduction in nitrogen. And you can see where you're at right now, about 19% on phosphorus and about 36% on nitrogen. And these two graphs then show you the phosphorus on the left and the nitrogen on the right, what percentage of that 45% reduction comes from the biological nutrient removal and what percent of it comes from the voluntary point source reductions.
Dave, could you just clarify the definition of point and non-point?
Sure. So a point source would really be any municipal or industrial wastewater treatment plant that's treating more than a million gallons a day of flow. There's 100 and some municipal plants in the state and there's 30 some industrial plants in the state that, that require-
Definition of non-point, then?
Non-point would be surface runoff, tile drainage, any other point sources of water and nutrients getting into, or non-point sources of water getting into the watershed, into the streams. So the first thing that we did really was establish- So the first thing that we did was really establish this nutrient baseline. And what this graph shows on the left is the sources of phosphorus, on the right, kind of the weighted sources of nitrogen. In the lower left there, we've identified roughly 73,000 pounds of phosphorus per year is coming from the Ames Water Pollution Control Facility. Roughly 357,000 is coming from watersheds upstream, non-point sources upstream. So about 20% of the, 21% of the total is from the, from the Water Pollution Control Facility in Ames, when you look at sources upstream of there. On the nitrogen side of things, it's not near as significant, only about 5% is coming from the Water Pollution Control Facility and the rest of it is coming from the, from the watershed.
Did we have any idea of those numbers before we were researching this?
They, the state of Iowa with the nutrient reduction strategy has kind of bracketed some general statewide numbers. And in actuality, what we found is your watershed is a little, I mean, your plant contributes a little higher percentage of phosphorus and probably a little lower percentage of nitrogen than what, what is kind of assumed to be the statewide average. John mentioned the secondary major driver for this study is really the aging condition of the trickling filters. The media that's inside these trickling filters and also the precast concrete structure that encapsulates that median is really approaching the end of its useful life. It's really difficult to forecast, but we're estimating something on the order of five to 10 years of life remaining, roughly 8.8, roughly $9 million needed to replace or refurbish. And historically, they've done a great job of providing the traditional conventional treatment that you've been required, but that particular treatment process really has limited value for biological nutrient removal. So really before you, as John mentioned, invest in that type of infrastructure, figuring out how that fits into the long-term plan was really important and the second driver to the study. So I'll talk a little bit about approach. We got started in April. This is the process we went through. We kind of started by updating the plan that we prepared back in 2012, established that baseline that we just talked about, looked at all kinds of watershed and water pollution control facility options, evaluated some alternatives. Through the process, we really worked closely with John and Christina and Jim and their staff to collaborate. About a month ago, we had an open house to get some stakeholder input. We also had an online survey that I'll share with you in a little bit, and we're here tonight then really to get some council input or guidance as we move forward. John alluded to this, I mean, what we're really striving to do is find the appropriate balance. And it's a difficult balance, really. I mean, what is the cost and timing of the investment to achieve IDNR's goals for nutrient removal versus what's the impact on your ratepayers, on your customers, and what are really the associated water quality benefits? So it's a real difficult balance that we're looking to achieve here. Talk a little bit about what we found in the watershed. These two pie charts really show where the watershed, the non-point sources of nutrients are coming from. On the left is phosphorus, on the right is nitrogen. They're listed in order of magnitude. By and large, farm fertilizer and manure are representing what, three fourths of the phosphorus and two thirds of the nitrogen. I would point out there that urban land is not an insignificant quantity either, as you start talking about the quality aspect in your ordinance. Urban is not an insignificant portion of it as well.
Just end that, so the source, this is like people's lawn fertilizers? Anything else besides that?
Yeah, I mean, nitrogen and phosphorus, I mean, if you go back and look at the, so on the nitrogen side of things, there's, I mean, there's atmospheric deposition and there's, there are lots of different sources, but I would say the lawn fertilizers are probably the largest in the urban. Now with respect to phosphorus, it's erosion. And phosphorus is usually absorbed to a particle. So anytime you have erosion, anytime you have soil particles that are entering the stream, you're contributing phosphorus.
I see.
So on the left of this slide, it identifies a number of practices, best management practices for watershed nutrient reductions. I'm going to use interchangeably this practice, best management practice, BMP. I mean, I'm trying to confuse you with all of those, but they're really all the same, whether I'm saying practice or BMP or best management practice. And so you can see the various practices that apply in the watershed, some pictures there of several of them. there of, of several of them. This table shows on the left the different practices. The next two columns then show what percent reduction that best management practice can receive or, or produce, and then the far right shows what the cost per pound for those practices are. So if you look right in the middle there, constructed wetlands is really the best value. I mean, you're getting 52% nitrogen, 58% phosphorus, relatively lowest costs. You look just above that, on the phosphorus side of things, you get a really good removal with water and sediment control basins. Again, that's controlling the sediment discharge and controlling the phosphorus for a pretty affordable price. And then on the ni, on the nitrogen side of things, the, the denitrification bioreactors are a pretty good value as well. So those are really what we targeted when we looked at watershed options for you guys. This slide then, again, shows the practices. The next column shows if it was applied everywhere it could be in the upstream watershed, how many acres it could be applied to. And then it shows what, in this term, this slide is referred to as potential credit, what kind of reduction could be achieved if you applied that throughout every place that you could possibly achieve it. The far right then tabulates what the requirements are for the plant. So roughly 50,000 pounds a year of phosphorus is what you need to reduce at the plant, 214,000 pounds of nitrogen you'd need to remove at the plant. And so you can see, let's just take an example here, let's look at the constructed wetlands. 76,000 is what could be achieved, 76,000 reduction could be achieved if it was applied to all 176,000 acres in the upstream watershed. If you look at that 76,000 and you compare it to the 50,000 that you're going to be required at the plant to achieve, you can see you'd have to implement that practice in 67% of the available land, well over 100,000 acres upstream. So it's really not quite there. I mean, it's not a good deal. If you look at the examples on the nitrogen side of things, there is a little more potential on the nitrogen, but it really, the watershed are not really the option to offset what you require at the plant. The next slide talks about cover crops. You can see the significance of the cover crops, how many acres they could be applied to, and what kinds of reductions they could achieve. That's really what ISU is focusing on. There's two, what I think are really potentially good research projects that they've got going on. One of them is perennial ground cover, where you'd basically plant row crops in between strips of perennial cover, which would greatly reduce the cost of providing ground cover. The second option that they're looking at is, is growing energy crops in riparian areas that could be harvested and used as an energy fuel. Both of those are potentially changing, game-changing watershed types of reductions, and anything that can be done in the watershed is going to take the pressure off of future more stringent requirements at the point sources.
When you talk about energy crops, you're thinking like switchgrass, that kind of thing?
It's really noteworthy, and this kind of pertains some to the discussion you had on Agenda Item 1 tonight. There, there are some pretty significant things you're doing in the urban watershed in terms of implementing best management practices. Several of them are listed right here of things that you have done. Now, the primary motive for those was not necessarily nutrient reduction, but that is an ancillary benefit that's been achieved. And, and really, you guys are kind of out on the front edge with incorporating the water quality component as well as quantity with your runoff ordinance, so certainly nutrient reduction benefits with what you guys are doing there. This slideshow summarizes the findings that we found in the watershed. I think the most significant by far is the first one. It's not practical really to offset entirely the need for reductions at the plant. At the same time, the fourth bullet down, you should continue to include those urban BMPs that have achieved nutrient reductions as ancillary benefits, and watershed reductions may still be useful to demonstrate leadership, to make progress, and offset future more stringent requirements at the plant. So moving on to the plant. These two pie charts show where the nutrients coming into the plant are coming from. By far and away, with both phosphorus and nitrogen, it's coming from residential commercial sources. There is a significant piece coming from industry, but there really isn't any single one or two industries that are contributing the lion's share. And then at the water plant, you are contributing or adding phosphate to control corrosion and stabilize the water, but that's a pretty insignificant contribution to the influence sources of nutrients at the plant. So really looking at that residential commercial breakdown, how, how, where's that residential commercial coming from? And we've got listed there on the right, from most significant to least significant, with urine and food additives being the most significant and personal care products being the least significant. You can kind of see the relative magnitude there. One thing that's really interesting to note is that detergent contributions have been dramatically reduced. In the early 90s, or early 2000s, actually, there were a number of states that banned phosphorus from, from detergents, and there was a nationwide voluntary ban in 2010, and the, the detergent manufacturers kind of saw the writing on the wall. So there've been dramatic reductions in what the contributions from detergents has been. So when you look at that split there, additional reductions from residential commercial sources is pretty challenging. Another thing that we had really hoped was to find some things that could be optimized at the plant. Could we modify the operation? Could we modify some of the purposes of some of the facilities to achieve some increased reduction? We looked at six different options. We did find that some achieved really the required phosphorus reduction, but didn't really do anything with nitrogen. The problem was, they were relatively expensive. They weren't inexpensive as we were hoping, they were relatively expensive. And what, what we've really concluded is that those modifications should be implemented in conjunction with an alternative technology, if it makes sense, but are not an answer in and of themselves. So this summarizes the findings at the plant. First one is probably most significant. You really need to incorporate some facilities that, that have an alternative, or an alternative tech treatment technology to achieve the required nutrient reductions. Source reductions can't do it, optimization can't do it. The existing trickling filters really aren't part of the long-term solution. At the same time, the nutrient reduction strategy provides the flexibility to continue to use those as long as their age and condition allows, and because of the value that they've already invested in them. So with that background, we looked at watershed alternatives. The first thing we did was look at potential sites on city property. See a list of the city prop, city properties here that, that could, could be used. Now, we're putting these forward simply as examples. I mean, we're not advocating any one of these, but just kind of examples of how much city property you own that could be applied for nutrient reduction. The second thing we looked at was other sites that aren't city-owned but are within the city. Again, just examples to convey concepts. We're not advocating anything, but several of them are listed and their locations are shown. And the third thing we looked at was potential sites upstream, outside of the city, city limits. And we've, again, listed some just to kind of convey the concepts there, and shown on the mapping where those are located. This is a bit difficult to read here, but what we've got on the far left there are a list of all of those sites from the previous three slides. The next column then shows what could be constructed possibly at that site. And then the last column show what the benefit, ancillary benefits would be. So in addition to nutrient reduction, you can see most of the alternatives accomplish a fair amount of other ancillary benefits, whether it be flood mitigation, erosion control, habitat restoration, water quality, or recreation. And so what we're really recommending is that you select and implement some of these watershed nutrient reductions based on a priority system, and that you do that really to demonstrate leadership, to make some progress, and really to bank or offset against future requirements at the, at the pollution control facility. So we've listed four different categories and some of the sub-criteria for each. These are criteria, prioritization criteria that staff has come up with that could be used to prioritize from that list of projects that we had. Moving forward then with the plant. So we started with the long-range facility plan recommendation back in 2012. Now, we did that prior to the nutrient reduction strategy, so we were doing that based on what we anticipated it would be. It did entail replacing the trickling filters, as we've talked about. It incorporated this technology, simultaneous nitrification/denitrification. I'm sure you've all heard of SNDN, but that's the technology that was kind of put in as a placeholder at that time, back in 2012. We estimated that at 25 million. Now, that's obviously inflated since then. But that was our starting point. That was then, now is now. We know what the nutrient reduction strategy is, so we've really been able to tailor the alternatives to the strategy. Again, we're replacing trickling filters, but there are several technologies that have really evolved since 2012 and are continuing to evolve, and we've shown four of them here, and, and all of them have meanings just as significant as simultaneous nitrification/denitrification to you, but they're all technologies that can achieve the required biological nutrient removal. So we've worked with staff to shortlist to three. We've included capital and O and M costs as a primary shortlist criteria. We've included some non-monetary performance criteria and acceptance criteria in shortlisting to three. What we've actually found is that the three are relatively similar in terms of cost and in, in terms of similar, similar in terms of non-monetary benefits. And so we're kind of recommending generically that one of those technologies be implemented moving forward. Here's the implementation plan and the phasing plan that we're suggesting. So the first phase would be in a one-to-five year, the next five-year time period. For each phase, the first two bullets identify what would be done, and the next two bullets then identify what the result would be. So for example, if you look at Phase 1 there, we'd keep the trickling filters in service. I mean, we're going to run them as long as we can run them because we got money invested. We're going to incorporate the first phase of alternative technology, and doing that, we're providing some redundant capacity, so if the trickling filter fails, we've got it. Plus, we're adding some additional capacity for growth, but we're really providing very limited, if any, nutrient reduction in that first phase. In the second phase, some of the trickling filters are going to be going out of service as they fail. We're going to be adding more alternative technology capacity, again, providing the additional and redundant capacity as they fail. Now, we're going to start providing some seasonal biological nutrient removal. Won't be able to necessarily do it year-round, but we'll be able to do it seasonally. And then in the third phase, 10 to 20 years from now, the remaining trickling filters will be out of service, we'll incorporate the third phase of that alternative technology, providing the forecast 2040 capacity, and now we'll be providing full biological nutrient removal in compliance with the nutrient reduction strategy. So here's the costs that are associated with those three phases. Now, these are all in $20, $18, and John will have to inflate these to reflect the year that they actually get put into your CIP, but in today's dollars, that's what, what they would be. This phasing really reflects the flexibility that's provided by the Iowa Nutrient Reduction Strategy. What they're asking for you is a plan of how you're going to, how it makes sense to implement it at your facility. They're not prescribing how or when, they're asking you for a plan of how you're going to do it, so that's...
Dave, can I, can I stop you there?
Sure.
So this is, I think this is new for, at least for me, maybe for all of us. I, I knew that we were looking at some kind of exchange where we could, instead of doing the filter, we could do some of these other methods, but at that point, we didn't have any authority that we could actually do this. It was all speculation. So I know we had a lobbyist in Washington DC that was working on our behalf. At what point did that flexibility get implemented? This, this is, this was when I saw this report.
The flexi, the flexibility that I'm referring to isn't really that you could offset it in the watershed with the plant. The flexibility I'm talking to is how quickly and how do you implement it at the plant?
Okay, so that's very important. I hope everybody's catching that then. So these other improvements are important leadership opportunities, but they're not designed to be a replacement for the physical improvements to the plant.
Right.
And so that's still a requirement, that's, that's not changed.
Right.
It might change, right? There's, so there's a potential with some deregulation, maybe that, there's some greater flexibility that's afforded to us that we could look at offsetting, but you made a very compelling argument tonight that the numbers don't really, we didn't, we'd have to do so much in the, in the way of counting improvements to realize the, the benefits that we can do in the plant. So that, that was very helpful. The flexibility that, sort of the second part of flexibility is that we don't have to do this all at once.
Right.
And so we have some time to build this in. And so is that new or is that been there from the beginning?
It's, it's been there from the beginning. I, I think it has evolved to where DNR is realizing how big of a challenge it is for people to implement, and realizing if you've got a sunk investment in technology like you guys do, you're not just going to go out and demolish it and put new technology in overnight. So I think that flexibility has kind of evolved.
And so is that a, is that change coming from the state or the federal government?
The state.
The number that I have heard, it's not just the wisdom in terms of our plant, but the number I've heard is a, the, the price tag for all of these hundred cities to do this is a billion dollars.
Yeah, it's very significant across the state.
And so Ames has a greater capacity to make these changes at home. This is devastating for communities that their budget's so simply having any space for something like this. So anyway, I, I think this is the first I've seen of, of this flexibility. This is good news.
This hasn't been approved by the state yet, right? Let's make it clear. Yeah, it, it has not been approved by the state. So we'd have to propose it to them, but there's indication they're accepting this kind of schedule, correct?
Yes.
But structurally, they've, they've sent a signal that we can propose something that's spread out over time.
And they have approved plans for others that reflect this kind of flexibility.
Yeah, well, anything we can do to spread the costs out is beneficial.
I think a key part of spreading the costs out is showing a logical transition from the technology you've got to a new technology as it fails, and I think also demonstrating a commitment with urban best management practices to do some reductions in the watershed in the meantime. So I think that combination, while the watershed ain't going to get rid of the need at the plant, it's going to buy you time at the plant by demonstrating commitment and demonstrating progress.
Thank you. Yeah, if I could just elaborate a little bit on the, the credit for these, these offsite watershed-type improvements. Like you mentioned, it, it has no value from a regulatory perspective for offsetting what we have to do right now. But there, there is the Iowa Nutrient Reduction Exchange, which is a new program that's just being generated. The league really took the lead in getting this program set up, and they're in the process right now of handing it over to the DNR to be the, the keeper and the administrator of that. What that allows us to do is any voluntary projects that we do offsite that have a nutrient reduction component to them, we can list them in the reduction exchange, follow a, industry-recognized model for how you evaluate, what their credit is, how many pounds of nitrogen or phosphorus you remove, and, and we list them in that program. And it's not adopted in rule yet, but the DNR is moving in this direction, and they're generating the program around this. Let's say that in 10 years or 15 years, 20 years, they find out that they're just not still getting to the goals of the nutrient reduction strategy, and so they decide they're going to tighten the limits down even further. The, the idea is that all of this additional voluntary stuff that we would be doing now, we get to take credit for that in the future towards any future reduction or tightening of those nutrient standards.
This has been a concern of mine, that we could put in this 36, $40 million filter, and then the rates, the, the requirements change on us, and we hear we've invested this, and we're sort of stuck with this. So that's, that's very nice that there would be some credit for this other work we do.
Yeah, and, and back on those non-monetary factors that we looked at, one of the factors that we looked at was the adaptability of the technology that we're, would look to implement now to be able to meet even more stringent technology in the future. So that was one of our considerations as well.
The last bullet there, I mean, we have recommended a phasing plan here that spreads it out, obviously, over 40 years. I mean, it could be accomplished all in one phase, it could be accomplished in two phases. I mean, if you guys chose to be more aggressive, you could be more aggressive, but what we're recommending is this phased approach for your consideration. But what we're recommending is this phased approach for your consideration. So unless directed otherwise, the potential strategy, integrated strategy that we would suggest be submitted to the DNR after the first of the year is listed here. It's basically convert from trickling filters to alternative technology over time to minimize costs and rate impacts by keeping the trickling filters in operation as long as they'll continue to run, to incorporate that optimization that we talked about to the extent that it makes sense, to demonstrate commitment through continued implementation of your urban BMPs like you've been doing, to really identify and fund, prioritize and fund some additional watershed nutrient reduction projects based on some criteria that they've put forth. And then really, as John indicated, to register and bank those watershed credits against future more stringent requirements with the nutrient reduction exchange. Now, I think it's really important that you continue to support Iowa State University's research, because if they can revolutionize or make big improvements in the watershed, that's going to take future pressure off of the point sources. Mentioned the stakeholder input earlier. You can see it's kind of summarized here. 20 respondents. The respondents were generally considered themselves knowledgeable of the nutrient issue. They were generally favorable of the utility investing and reducing nutrient reductions, and they were generally supportive of some level of rate increase to do so. Your point earlier, 20 is not necessarily a representative response from the community, but that's the response we got from those 20. So what's the path forward? So we're looking for some council direction from you guys tonight. We'll have a draft plan in the CIP that John will bring for your budget planning in January. Then we'll finalize the plan, and John will submit that to DNR at the appropriate time. What I can tell you right now is the anticipated CIP, what we're anticipating right now, would be $39.63 million over 20 years. That's the $2018 that I had indicated on that earlier slide inflated to when they would actually occur. $100,000 a year commitment, which we think can really be leveraged with a lot of funding sources to implement watershed BMPs. We're suggesting no further investment in the trickling filters. So we're pretty satisfied. We think we've achieved about as good a balance as you can achieve here between the cost and timing of the nutrient removal goals that DNR has established and the rate impacts and the water quality benefits. But we're really here to see what you guys' thoughts on that are.
So to wrap it up, in the staff report we gave you, at the very end, we showed you draft copies of what the capital improvements plan pages would look like based on the results of this study. So we would start that first phase. You know, we would show you some engineering in year four, and then construction would straddle years five and year six in that future CIP. And then when we do the rate projections, we would have that Phase Two then that would sit at the end of the 10 years that I, the planning period that I use when I show you So that would be an update to a page that you've seen in the past. And then there's a new project, as Dave has talked about, the watershed-based nutrient reduction. And the concept there is that we would allocate $100,000 per year towards watershed-based projects. Some years, we may have something that we would do with it. Some years, we may not. We may hold the money for a couple of years and try to accumulate more dollars to be able to take on a bigger project at any given time. But it's really just a placeholder in the rate planning for taking on projects as they appear and they make sense for us. So unless you tell us that we're completely off-base, this is what we plan to bring forward to you here in about six or seven weeks.
I think it looks good. I mean, I think, yeah, spreading the costs out, it is a very costly project, so spreading it out as you have is good. And I don't know that we'd be more aggressive. But what is the warning you'd get on the trickling filters beginning to fail? Like, how much time before you're like, oh, they're going to, when they go? And what if that happens sooner rather than later, I guess? Can you give me an idea on that?
Yeah, you want to talk about what you guys found?
Yeah. So we've seen trickling filter failures elsewhere. And what we have generally seen is that it's not a catastrophic failure. When the media starts collapsing, you still can trickle wastewater over it. It still provides some level of treatment. But it's not like today it's providing treatment and tomorrow it's gone. It's typically not a catastrophic failure. It takes some time. But what we're suggesting in that first phase is that we would have capacity built into that first phase for two of the trickling filters to fail.
After five years?
Yes. When the first phase is constructed, you'll have the capacity for two of the trickling filters to fail. In the interim, you'd have some growth capacity if-
If they didn't fail.
Right, if they didn't fail.
Sure.
And then what we've built into that second phase is replacement capacity really for the rest of the trickling filters to fail. Now, you've got first-stage trickling filters, and you've got second-stage trickling filters. The first stage have more volume and less media and are much heavier loaded. The second stage have more structure in the media, more plastic, and are not loaded nearly as heavily.
So a little more life left on those?
So we're thinking that the second-stage filters will probably last longer than the first-stage filters. But again, that's really difficult to predict.
Thank you. No, as long as we get years of warning, that's good.
So a couple of questions. The $100,000 per year for watershed BMPs strikes me initially as a fairly small amount. And when you look at what we're spending on the physical improvements on the plant, it just seems like sort of a tiny, tiny amount. And I wonder-
Come on, say "drop in the bucket."
Oh, yeah, drop in the bucket. Yeah, thank you. But how did we, how did you arrive at that amount? And are we really going to move the needle on anything with only $100,000? I mean, I'm trying to be a good steward with taxpayer dollars, but I also want to make sure that we're just not doing something in a token effort, but it would, there'd actually be some benefit to it.
I don't think anybody would object if you wanted to commit more than $100,000.
But where did the amount come from? Why $100,000?
It is a somewhat arbitrary figure. We think that there's going to be funding sources available that you could leverage that with or that you could match that against and make it more substantial than that. But it is, it's kind of, it's kind of the minimum level that we think makes sense to look for matching funds and to demonstrate progress.
Are there any, I'm sorry, I'm flipping through the slides here. Are there any cost estimates per acre of some of these BMPs? Like, so, yeah, can you tell me the cost estimate of a standard-size riparian buffer or anything like that, bioreactor? How much is a woodchip bioreactor?
Well, we've got the costs identified here per pound.
The per-pound reduction. No, I mean, to, how far are we going to stretch that $100,000? So what's it cost to make a standard-size denitrification bioreactor?
Well, one of the things that we have seen that Des Moines is doing is they have a lot of trees that they're cutting down and chipping because of the ore.
Sure.
And they're actually finding that it's cheaper for them to dispose of those in constructed bioreactors than it is for them to dispose of them elsewhere. So I think a lot of it really, a lot of it really depends.
Okay.
And we really haven't got to the point where any of those sites that we identified, we've sized any facilities or come up with any estimates of costs. But to me, once you start prioritizing what you could do, then you'll have some costs for what those-
Yeah, because that is a good question.
Seems like that could go along with the- The assessment of what Ames is going to be doing in relation to the Story County study on the watersheds, right? Because we haven't decided what our role is in that, because staff needs to review the report. And so maybe that amount would change or that-
Sure. Loris, do you want to speak?
Loris Olson, Story County Supervisor. And I just wanted to bring you up to date where we are, headed down this same road. We expect to hear from our staff. We formed an internal working group to go through the report. Staff from a variety of disciplines are on this working group. We expect to hear from them on December 11th. And at that point, we will start looking at what they recommend, comparing it to our strategic plan and our C2C, the cornerstone, capstone-to-cornerstone plan. I think I got that backwards. But anyway, so the point is that I think that we'll be partnering opportunities as we go forward. But it sounds like with some of the decisions that you may want to make related to funding on some of the watershed alternatives, might be at the same time, we'll be discussing on our budget where we're going to move forward on our watershed strategy, if we're going to go ahead and look at an outside firm to go ahead and implement it or not. So I just wanted to give you an update on that, that, and some of it is not as expensive as you think. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And one more question. So we've been focusing on dealing with the nitrogen and phosphorus once it's in the environment. And my question is more for you, Dave, on this. Is there any, are there any best practices that cities are adopting to help reduce the amount of contribution going into the environment to begin with? So our focus, if you think of this as an equation, we're focusing on the output. I would like to know, is there anything we can do on the input side? Specifically, we have been targeting Ada Hayden. We're very concerned about protecting Ada Hayden. So as we develop to the north, we're all going to be very upset if at some point we go out to Ada Hayden and we see it covered with algae plumes. And so we've communicated to staff, and we're making efforts to try to reach out to the homeowner associations in the watershed that would impact Ada Hayden. So are there, are there some best practices you can share with us briefly that maybe we should be considering?
Well, I think, I think when you think about it in the context of your Agenda Item One discussion tonight, I mean, I think some of these regional detention facilities or fee-in lieu of, or, I mean, I think there are some regional solutions that might help with flood mitigation, that might be constructed in a manner that are going to help with phosphorus or nitrogen as well. And particularly if you've got development upstream of Ada Hayden, maybe there's some, maybe there's some potential there to do some of those things. Now, in talking with your parks group, they're already using phosphorus-free fertilizers on your parks and your golf courses. I don't know how prevalent that practice is with the residential, commercial community, landscaping community around town, but it seems to me like that's something that could be investigated as well. I think that's a best practice there of educating. You've already got the Smart Waters, is that the group?
Yeah, the Smart Watersheds.
You've already got the Smart Watersheds group. I mean, it seems like that is something that could be considered as a best management practice, is educating and trying to get the public to say, hey, our soils really don't require phosphorus. You need to be looking at nitrogen and potash, but not phosphorus concentrations in your fertilizer. And then really, all of the traditional low-impact development types of things are certainly, now I'm talking more specifically about urban runoff than I am about what's coming into the treatment plant and doing this. The soil quality restoration, I mean, the comment earlier about the 58, 56 versus the 78 or the 72, I mean, it's really amazing, the soil quality restoration. I mean, restoring soil quality restoration keeps so much more of our runoff infiltrating in place as opposed to running off. So any of those soil quality restoration types of things. The biggest bang for the buck on the source coming into the plant has really been the phosphorus-free detergents are dramatically reducing. And so you've really done a lot of that. The area to potentially look at is some of the commercial. Detergents are still not phosphorus-free, so there could be some kind of a survey or some kind of a check on what kind of detergents are being used at commercial facilities.
What about the food additives chunk of that pie? Can you tell me what that means?
Well, I think it's just in the food that you and me consume day in and day out. I mean, it's not necessarily additives that you have at your house. It's just what's in the-
Your vitamin-enriched cereal that you have for breakfast.
Your soft drinks.
Oh, interesting.
We're doing a lot with bank stabilization. I mean, that's to your point on erosion.
So I'm not really up on alternative technologies. So I have no idea what these sludge, activated sludge systems are or whatever. But I'm curious, we have in town a local company that has developed a revolving algol biofilm system. And is that something that is similar to our trickling filters? Or it seemed like that that might be something that we would see recommended, given the local nature of that company?
Yeah, that's a really good question. We had Martin Gross from Grosswind Technologies come to one of our collaborative workshops with the city and talk about that. We actually asked him for a proposal as to how that technology could be implemented into the facility. And I don't remember the size or the cost, but to treat your entire flow stream through that was a huge area and a really big cost. Probably the most applicable portion of that is you have, you collect the biosolids and the sludge from the other processes, and then you take it up to your anaerobic digestors, you land apply the solids, you return some of the, some of the liquid stream back into the plant to be treated. In doing that, you release a lot of the nutrients that you've just captured in the biosolids. This technology is something that could be used for what we call side-stream treatment. So you treat that recycled stream to remove, which is a small fraction. I don't know what, 5%? 10% Jim? Maybe not even that.
Not even that.
But it's really concentrated in nutrients. And so now you're looking at a much smaller footprint for that revolving algol bio, bioreactor, RAB. I don't know if that's what it stands for, but it's RAB.
Revolving algol biofilm.
Okay.
I looked it up.
Okay. Yeah, so that was a good question. We've actually had Martin in Grosswind engaged.
And we actually have them under contract right now to do some pilot testing at the plant for us. So all this does is nutrient reduction. It doesn't incorporate any increase in capacity over that same period of time. So anything else that would be a different CIP project?
No, the numbers that I've given you do the nutrient reduction and provide you your 2040 capacity with an allowance for some industrial growth as well.
True. Thank you.
Good question. But it's not the only capital improvements you're going to see at the plant. There's other-
Right.
Well, we had a much larger number thrown around a few months ago relating to capacity improvements. And this gets nutrient reduction and increased capacity-
Right.
-at roughly 70-some million dollars less than a number that was out there. Just wanted to clarify that.
Well, that's good news.
That is good news.
All right. And again, no action tonight as consent on your proposed plan.
To move ahead.
As it is.
Unless you think we're headed in the wrong direction here. We're going to keep going.
I thought it was a very impressive report, and it was readable. I mean, you didn't need a PhD to understand this, so I appreciate. Some of these reports are very difficult to read, very technical. This one, I thought, was very well-written.
It was John that wrote the report, and we put the presentation together, so.
Now, are there, are there any public folks who have come to give comment on this item tonight? We're not making any decisions necessarily, but if you'd like to give input, you've been waiting a while to hear this topic, so I could get a chance. Oh, Scott, come on up.
Scott, real flex and gearing. The other half of the company deals with this, but I just want to talk about opportunities tonight because ruined some work in the county. And I think you need to- And I think you need to look at this. I think the $100,000 is too small. Go bigger, don't do it at all. Because you have some ancillary benefits that you can do two things at once. You can do flood protection and you can do a lot of what's required here. And, you know, I stood on the site of what was the Hardee's, now the Panera in 1993 with Bob Kindred and said it didn't need to happen again. And it didn't. If we'd spent a half a million a year doing flood control, we would have done a lot of these things and we wouldn't have floods here, period. And there's opportunities to do that within the, in the watershed that do a lot of these things together. But I think it takes more money than $100,000. And it takes looking at things a little bit bigger because you can do, you know, you get more bang for your buck. You're doing two things. We have a project that we're working on in the county for Friedrichs right now. And, you know, the way that that, that project is structured, we can take care of about 500 or 600 acres of farmland and treat it. But there's some obstacles to that in the way that the C2C plan that Laura's talked about that prevent us from maybe doing what we'd like to do there. And so that, so there's some things that need to be coordinated with the county that allows us to do those things. And I think those are all good for Ames in general. Have a lot of possibilities. So I just want to, I just want to bring that up and have you think in a, I think that money does need to be a little bit bigger chunk. And when you look for your bang for your buck, I think you're going to get a lot out of it, so. And then the county does need to be a participant in this because they're upstream. That includes both Hamilton and Boone County to a certain extent, depending on how far you want to go up in the watershed. But that's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you.
One thing that I've been rattling and not mentioning, Dan Haug with Prairie Rivers is here tonight as well. Prairie Rivers has been actively engaged in this process. A lot of the baseline data and a lot of the ideas that are reflected in watershed stuff have come from them. And so I just want to acknowledge the contribution that Dan and Prairie Rivers has made to it as well.
Thank you. Any other input on this one? All right. Seeing none, any other council discussion on this item? Any direction on that $100,000 number?
That'll come later.
CIP, we could always amend it then at that time, too. Okay. Well, in that case, we have the disposition of communications to council. I think the only thing we got in our non-agenda packet was the HRC scorecard back from Diane. Oh, yeah, thank you, staff, sorry. Thank you. And no action was required on that necessarily. It was just FYI. So council comments, Tim?
There's a lot to think about tonight with respect to the nutrient reduction strategy. And I feel like we've focused a lot on the side of treating. I would like to spend some more time as well thinking about the things, best practices we can do as a community to reduce what goes into the system. So I, maybe I'll mold this over a bit more and talk with Steve about what an appropriate motion would be. But I thought it was really good discussion tonight on this. Nothing further.
Gloria? I'm interested in returning to Chuck's suggestion. And I'm not sure what form that should take because I, I think David had a question about incentives or not so much incentives, but offsets for costs. And I had mentioned CDBG. I think all of these things are kind of part of the same concern that we may want to be looking for some means for the city to offset the stormwater management costs in some way. So I guess I would move that we get a memo from staff making some suggestions.
I'm not sure what you want. You need a little bit more direction now. Is it, you know, the we versus me? So are you saying you'll analyze each, each project? You'll have to determine whether it benefits the whole system or just the individual?
No, I just want to know what kinds of potential we have for funding sources.
That's easy. You raise the storm sewer utility fee. That's how we're doing it here with the sewer, you know, the $100,000. You can carry over funds like that. You know, that's how you do it. We do have a utility fee. We could tell you, if you told me how much money you want, $100,000 a year, $200,000 a year, we could tell you what the fee would have to go up for.
Well, I believe Gloria is also asking for information about whether or not we can use CDBG money for such a thing.
Well, I think you can, I think you can for public improvements, public improvements of the public system in, Vanessa, we'll tell you the areas that qualify. You know, we made road improvements in those areas.
Yep.
That's what I want to know.
So just CDBG funds that you're looking for?
And David, what was it that you asked?
Tax abatement.
Tax abatement.
Okay, I can tell you it's going to be hard for tax abatement. I'll do the study, but you need an increment usually. So building a storm retention bond is not going to add value enough. They're going to get anything back. I mean, it's grants, as I think you do. But I'll verify that. Tax abatements, CDBG funds, storm utility fees, right? And any other we can think of. But I'm telling you, I can tell you right now.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.